The Town of Bay Harbor Islands March Council Meeting is called to order at 7:01 PM. If we can all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, we have the Bay Harbor Bobcat going to do the pledge. We have over there the microphone.
Mine.
Yeah.
See the mic?
The actual... Yes. There you go. Okay. There you go. Okay. All right.
(inaudible)
Great job! Great job! Wait, wait, wait.
Noah, right? So Noah is a Bobcat, nine years old, and you're in second grade, and your favorite after-school activity is cheerleading and hanging out with friends. That was one of my favorites also. And you also enjoy spending time with your brother Zachary. So, thank you so much. And as a small token of our appreciation, this is for you, and we can take that home with you. But I couldn't get the three halves, so I just kept on going. But then one was kind of heavy, right? There we go. One over.
Three, one, two, and three, three, one more. One, two, three.
And by the way, happy birthday. She had a birthday.
Oh, happy birthday!
One of our many, many students that utilized Nigay Street Park. So, thank you so much. All right, roll call please, Madam Clerk.
Captain Muyapi.
Here.
Captain Richard Koche. Here. Captain Vesalver.
Here.
Captain Marie. Here. Vice Mayor Bruder. Here. Mayor Leonard.
Here.
All present.
Okay, we have a special presentation. Manager?
Good evening, everybody.
They got it turned on.
Turn it on. Turn it on.
Good evening, everybody. I'd like to invite a couple of people up right now. Patrick Pendegast, our school crossing guard coordinator, and Gustavo Zapata, if you'd come up. This wasn't the Bay Harbor Island Corps behind me. All the people you see here tonight in yellow are some of the people sometimes we can easily overlook that have one of the most important jobs. It's crossing our kids to and from school. When I got here, that unit, that's why I can describe it, or that group of individuals, were just here. But through the efforts of the police department and the school crossing guard coordinator, you can see they've changed their uniforms, and there's a little more esprit de corps in that with this group. Gustavo's been a long-serving member of this, of our school crossing guards, and this year they initiated an Officer of the Year, and I'll turn it over to Pat to do, tell a little more of the story.
Thank you, Ron. My name's Patrick Pendegast. I moved here some three years ago, and one of my great privileges is to be in charge of this wonderful group of people. I was privileged to take over the group when I came to the police department. I'm a retired New York City Police Sergeant, so the line of work that I'm doing now is more supporting of our department, and this is one of the things that we've put together. The program has existed, of course, as everybody knows, for quite some time, but most recently we established a training program. We meet every week on a Wednesday after school. We study the newest safety measures. We go over the rules and procedures of safe crossing guard activities, and we're very mindful of what's going on at the school at all times. So, I was privileged by the police chief to allow for the establishment of a crossing guard of the year program, and now this is the first time we're actually doing it. So, I'm very grateful for that, and on behalf of the police chief, he's here, Gustavo Zapata is the 2016 Crossing Guard of the Year. On behalf of the Florida Department of Transportation, that's a very nice badge, Gustavo. And of course, this nice certificate which says, "Town of Bay Harbor Island School Crossing Guard is here, Gustavo Zapata. This presentation is made for vital service in protecting the Bay Harbor Islands' schoolchildren. As a school crossing guard, you ensure the safety of our children across the state by facilitating their safe journey to and from school. Your dedication to your community and schoolchildren of our children is, as you, is a part of our service, is very commendable. With appreciation for your job well done, this award is presented to you."
Yeah? You might see Gustavo over by the Cadillac dealer on it.
That's where he is. He's always at the Cadillac dealership.
And he's also a resident.
Thank you very much. I'm not sure if my camera can handle the colors.
Why don't you guys take this one? Because it's... The flash goes off all these ways.
You know what the difference between our crossing guards and others is that they know who the kids are.
Oh, they do.
And we should point that out, that these things are who the kids are.
You know, before they leave, I wanted to just say, I do know that our crossing guards are a little bit special and a little bit different because they know our children. They know who crosses where, they know when they're coming, and as a parent, I know exactly where the gentleman who won the award, he's at by the Cadillac dealership, and he makes sure that those kids get across no matter what. And we want to thank you, I guess from the council, for all your help and all your services to the community and to the children. Sweet thank you.
And a thank you to Patrick as well. We have another special guest, County Commissioner Sally Hayman. Sally, our commissioner.
Mayor, council, and back to our constituents, good evening. And my apologies, I came from tour mode, I didn't have a chance to change. I'd run into the traffic, but I'm responsible for it. Sally Hayman, Miami-Dade County Commissioner, do I need to address her for the record?
No.
Okay. A couple of things, and thank you for indulging me, because we share the interest of not just your city as a jurisdiction, but all of the people who live, work, and play here and commute through it. I wanted to acknowledge, and I'm glad the chief is still here, we had a gun buyback. I do it at a, try to do it on an annual basis, and this is the fourth year where Bay Harbor Island has sent over officer slash officers to participate. We did it at the end of last month, and we took 31 workable guns off the streets. We had shotguns, we had automatics, we had all kinds of guns, we even had a sword. But the emphasis is, where people have a right to have guns, we want to make sure that they're responsible, and if they choose not to assume that responsibility anymore, we'd like to make sure that they don't end up in some irresponsible circumstance or through victimization out on the street. So, for all the guns that we collected, they went to a foundry, and they're going to become the manhole covers on our sewer systems throughout Dade County. But it was a joint effort with five different police departments, and we're always happy to have Bay Harbor Island as a part of our efforts to make our community safer. With that also, Bay Harbor Island, to our newest member, has been involved in the civil citation program, which has become a national model. And it's very easy for people to come in on what is someone else's success and tried and true, but it's always a challenge when you are at the forefront to say, "Let's make it a success. Let's try it out for our citizenry." And what it does is for misdemeanors, low-grade misdemeanors, we give the law enforcement agency the ultimate discretion to say, instead of do nothing or arrest, as I presented last time, Mayor and new champion, here's an extra alternative in discretion. Write a ticket. Your city gets part of the ticket assessment back in your coffers, but most especially it reprioritizes law enforcement to do their job in their jurisdiction with additional level of discretion, but also it quits bogging down the system where to arrest people, where it's going to be a mistake or a withhold or no process, but they have an arrest record that will hinder them in the future. Give them one shot, allow the officers a discretion on the street, and they can make that decision, they're competent, and it works well. So I want to thank Bay Harbor Island, you're on the early start. We have several states, we have 22 counties in Florida that are doing it, and it's going to be a growth. To the last issue I want to present to you before I do my ask, there's been a lot of concern about immigration and our county policy. I have been addressing the label, the designation of sanctuary, city, county, or jurisdiction since a year ago February. And personally, professionally, and then as a county commissioner, I was never happy with assuming a label that was yet to be defined, a declaration that had no understanding of what it meant. And under the last administration, it was leave it alone, it doesn't mean anything. Under this administration, we saw diversity that it could mean to an immigration population just by its label. We would lose CDBG money, we would lose beach nourishment money under a threat. So the reality is, the confidence I have in Bay Harbor Police Department is the same I have in all the other municipalities, and including Miami-Dade Police Department. The way the law stands, and I'm using a vehicle such as this at all council meetings, starting in District Four, I've given your attorney a copy of the ordinance, I hope you all will look at it. There will be no sweeps by your jurisdiction or anybody else in Miami-Dade County. What it says is, if a person commits a crime and they are caught, and in catching them, it is determined by the police officer that they will be arrested and then booked, central booking at TGK, only then with fingerprints and a photograph to the state of Florida and the federal government, will the federal government be apprised that we have somebody in custody. And it is then through NCIC at the federal level, they will advise us, they would like this person to be kept based on immigration status. In some cases, based on the crime, we're going to keep them anyways, because our priority, like yours, remains safety on the street, public safety first. You have to have probable cause with a police officer in order to arrest them, and for ICE to detain them and put a request through with our corrections, they must have probable cause. They don't need a warrant, they don't need a judicial order, they must have probable cause, which is required for either of those instruments. And with that, for seven situations in advance of someone being detained, any and all people, whether it's in Bay Harbor Island as an employee, someone who is a parent who brings their child to this, to one of our schools here, someone who rides a bus and through PTP gets off at a public bus at a stop on the way to service, one of the hotels, or a house, or a business, there will be no witch hunt. There has never been a witch hunt, and no one, regardless of their citizenship, patriotism, or immigration status, will be checked and blocked unless there is a crime committed in Dade County at the corrections facility. So for people who are concerned, if you're law-abiding, this will not chill your everyday life, and life goes on. And hopefully, that's the type of reassurance you all can offer in your varied roles out in the community, in addition to the medium you use here at your council meeting. I can tell you, as an immigrant myself, and I'm not seeing anybody of Native American here, I think we're all immigrants, the chilling effect it has for the potential hurt and fear for people to be healthy and fear, if they're not, to go to our hospitals, their children not to be inoculated, or fear to go work with any level of government. So, I can't get the media to report the accuracy, so hopefully your attorney will look at it, see the six factors included, twice reference probable cause, and it's based on a criminal act that we report something at the federal or state level when we book them. If you're law-abiding, there's no issue. And to my sole request, and Madam Clerk, if you'll have this, and then you can hold it up for the attention of the public, this is our FEC corridor in northeast Dade, and here's a sample of a regent. This is my ask, representing District Four and your great community. We're in the northeast corridor. We have, as far as mass transportation, some PTP, local little chariots in our own communities, or some bus service. We have no Metro Rail, we have no Metro Mover. And we have, under the SMART Plan, six proposals. Northeast corridor is the cheapest of all six. And if you'll see in the picture I took, the rail, it's the FEC corridor, the rail, that literally will remove people and vehicles off our streets to commute from the county line in Aventura, which will be across the street from the shopping mall. That is the only one that's set in stone as a destination place to get people, or bring people, all the way down to the government center, and that's the other one, the Brightline Station, in between three, four stops. But you will have an opportunity, all of us, to get your people over to a link in this area, and they will go to the Arsh, or the Heat Game, or Bayside, or the Port, or connect to the government center, and go to the airport, or government, or down south, or up to the shopping mall. And the challenge will be the connectivity. What I'm asking you to do, and we gave you a sampling, is if you can in the sometime future come up with a resolution that says, "We support prioritizing this, one of six plans as a priority for the SMART Plan. We will be ready to put rail in the ground in the next month or two, supposedly, this government." But the reality is, by 2018, that rail is going to be running for an alternative to just the Brightline and the current rail traffic. I would like it to take our constituents back and forth to whatever destination they choose, instead of having to do it in someone's car or their own. And so for that, I ask for your support to embrace it. We're going to do the connectivity working with you and your PTP dollars, and we've heard from the mayors and the group of down south how much they want the bus line continued. I would like to have something started, and I probably share that with all of you, that I know and have discussed our transportation roles. So you have a sample, Mr. Attorney, if there's anything else. Your clerk knows me on speed dial, I hope, Marlene, so Madam Clerk, please get back with me. I'd like to do it for all of us, and it's such a pleasure to work with you, so thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I have just a quick question. Getting back to the immigration speech that you gave us, I need to really wrap my mind around the definition of a law-abiding person. So, and I'm presuming that law-abiding means they're following every other law except our immigration laws, is that correct?
Not necessarily. Under the guise of immigration for detain, you have traffic laws that you can violate without being booked at a county jail. So, anything, Commissioner, in which it results in, from your history, an open warrant, or what you are being alleged to be charged with, with probable cause, that you're going to be booked down at Dade County Jail, TGK, that is what is meant by law-abiding. It could be a series of misdemeanors, it depends on what it is.
But that someone that's here without immigration status is not considered breaking the law under what you said, is that correct?
That is correct, because that's a civil violation. We don't even bring them in for that. They have to have a criminal charge in order to be booked.
And on my same note, one other question also on the immigration issue. One of my problems with it is, I want you to address it if you could. It seems that they're held indefinitely. I would like to have some form of term, in other words, the idea that someone can be held for an indefinite term just doesn't seem American to me.
An American? I agree. I still respect the Constitution, and whether it's violating the Fourth Amendment rights under due process, or the Fourteenth under equal protection, I agree. The reality is, we have, once our initial resolution passed in 2013, we capped it. What we got in trouble for is we charged them because we didn't feel if we were going to release them, whether it was on bail, or time served, or withheld, that they were danger to our community. Public safety was a priority. That the federal government wanted it and wanted us to detain, we looked at the law and it says up to 48 hours. We stopped at a 46 with exception of holiday and weekends. So I agree 100%. Our standard rule is, you will not have them in custody more than 48 hours, with exception of weekend or holiday, but we advise them right away. If they want them, we're not seeing it as a public safety issue. We're not going to hold them past that time. Our argument, and I share it with you, is we need comprehensive immigration reform. That's another argument, another council meeting. But I support your position also. We're doing our best. Thank you all for indulging me, it's always good to see you, and the Levin will be using your great explorers to help secure, we'll see you all hopefully not before April 30th. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Commissioner, thank you. All right, we're going to go next to request withdrawals, deferments, and future items.
Three and five.
Three and five?
Five is on mine too.
Okay.
Well, three, four, and five. Mr. Senerino's here for three and four.
I mean, is there someone that has an issue with four, or are we just, I mean, he can talk about three, but...
I think if Mr. Senerino's here, he might as well address both issues, okay?
My future agenda item.
Okay, let's hear our future agenda item.
My future agenda item, which has come out of speaking to many residents and attending the coffee with the cops and hearing what the few residents said, traffic locally and across our causeway is a huge issue for people. I would like to put on the next agenda that we look at commissioning a traffic study and engaging a firm to evaluate existing conditions and then make recommendations for the future. And because the bridge is almost done now, I'm observing in two other locations, 63rd Street on Miami Beach and Snake Creek and Island Marada, where they have drawbridges, and they have had success, it's not easy, negotiating and working with the Coast Guard and the Florida Inland Waterway folks. And I know the manager and Mr. Pendegast, they've been working on it, and they've been gathering the data necessary. It's not an easy process, there are no promises, but the thought of doing what they did in Island Marada and reducing the number of bridge lifts from two an hour to one an hour during at least rush hour or peak hours, I think that would go a long way to alleviate traffic, and I want us to relentlessly pursue it. In that, I would like to invite the people from the Coast Guard and the Florida Inland Navigation, so they can give us a presentation. They may not be available the next time, but Mr. Manager, if you could do that, that and the study would be great. Also, on the local roads, what I'm hearing is the speeding complaints. And I've been asking people, you know, obviously, if some kind of traffic calming, like the green path that we've done is going to go a long way to calm traffic, and everybody here is pretty much in agreement with that. Maybe we look into some kind of, either a mild speed bump, or like in Keystone Point, they have these simulated speed bumps that make you think you have to slow down, but they don't actually cause you to go over it, because I think that that would really go a long way, especially at the end of the islands. I know, you know, there's been speeding from certain businesses here. And then finally, part of the traffic at the 98th Street in front of the park, I had asked for that 15 mile an hour zone, and that's great, there's some lettering on the ground, but I would like to see it more like a school zone with the flashing lights and maybe some signs, because not everybody sees that on the road, like more bells and whistles there, because I use it all the time, and it's scary.
So even, I think we should do it to all the stop signs, we should, you know, because at nighttime, a lot of them at night, they just go right by them, they don't even, they're not even aware that the stop sign...
It's not just at night.
Right. I'm saying.
In other words, we really need a very comprehensive look at traffic, so I'm not saying, you know, we should do bumps or not, but it's, these are definitely examples.
We'll put it on for the next meeting.
Yeah, including a study, please, thank you.
Okay, all right, anyone else for, anything else? Okay. Town manager's report, Ron?
I have nothing tonight.
All right, very good.
The bridge is almost done, we have been putting in the lights, but there'll be no more work on top.
Great.
I have a question. Weren't we supposed to get a report on the finances of the bridge, like the last thing we mentioned before today, we were going to talk about?
It'll go out, it's going out in the mail.
Are you still working on it?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm really done with it.
Also, can you please follow up? Dan Bray, I'm now waiting four months for his support and recommendation.
Send the letter.
Yeah, he sent it out.
I got it, I got it. The package.
Okay, mine did not, we did not. Ron, mine was addressed to you, if you could, because I was asking for four months and it didn't give them...
Maybe sometimes they put it like an extra one.
Yeah, yeah. No, but it wasn't in mine.
Okay. All right, council reports, we'll start with Josh.
No, but I don't have to worry about that one. Okay, I just wanted to look, I've been here for the last month, I attended the chief's dinner, it was, they did a great job, chief, it was wonderful. Also, the Miami-Dade County League of Cities Board of Directors meeting, and the coffee with the cops the other day, which was a wonderful event, first-time event. I'm hoping that we have quite a few more. Kathy Kennedy had the suggestion, kudos to her for having that set up along with the chief. I am hoping that more people come out for the next one, but we did have a nice attendance, and I do hope we continue it. That's it. Bob?
I was at the Dade League meeting, and I really don't think I'll pre-record this one.
So, we had our second new farmer's market this weekend with yoga, and it was a great success. We had a couple extra vendors, I know Kelly was there, I know Elizabeth was there, and Bob was there too, and in two weeks, we're going to have our picnic, as well as another farmer's market, and it'll be moving back to the other locations.
So it'll be going on simultaneously?
Yeah, it will, but it's every other week, so that way...
Oh, it's every other week.
It's every other week, that way, because people, you know, we don't want to, I want to make sure we can support it all the way through. Thank you.
Great, great. Elizabeth?
Thank you. I attended the chief's dinner and want to really thank the firefighters and the police officers. It was a lovely first responders, it was a lovely dinner, and really honored some very special police officers and some of the work that they did. I want to remind everybody at the town picnic on the 26th, you can do electronic recycling, so please bring your unwanted electronics, as far as I know, we don't have a limitation on the type of electronic that you can bring in, so it's a great time to go through your houses and get rid of all of those, you know, old cell phones, and DVD players, and TVs, and whatever it is that you have that you're going to put in the garbage, please don't do that, please bring it, and we will safely recycle it for you. I want to remind everyone too, on the 18th, they're going to be showing Moana. For those of you who didn't get a chance to see it, it's very exciting, all the kids get to come out, and it's a very exciting month, I think that...
That's almost the first run movie.
That, it's really, I mean, it was just in the movie theaters. For those of you who have children, it's a very big deal that Moana is coming to our town.
It's a great movie.
I love that movie. I love that movie. But it's really exciting. I think that the three things that we're talking about, just happening in this month alone, are great reflections of what Bay Harbor is about. It's about community, it's about bringing people together, it's about reflecting who we are, and I'm just really grateful that the staff and the council has endorsed these items, and we can continue to do more.
Great, Kelly?
I'm curious with those movie nights, if there are any refreshments there? You had popcorn, right?
There's a program with the PTA.
And I know Liza mentioned, Liza from the market, that she would, you know, provide one or two vendors, if you wanted to have more significant food, like a dinner vendor or something, so...
I mean, we kind of... Well, this is also the end of, we're coming to the end of these right now. We should look at for next, for next year, wherever we end up doing it, changing around it.
Yeah, almost like a food truck kind of event, but with our farmer's market.
They do that with, in Sunny Isles, when they do their movies.
Well, I, too, attended the last Dade Chiefs meeting, and the League of Cities monthly meeting that I frequently go to. I went to the Coffee with the Cops, and it was great. These are the kind of programs that I used to manage when I was working with Miami Beach P D. And, you know, it's tough to get people out, 9:00 A.M., you know, it's good for a certain group of people, and Coffee with the Cops is a great program that was actually started in 2011 in Hawthorne, California. So, it's all over the country, it's a wonderful program. And what I would like to do is, to accommodate the people working during the day, is maybe do a pizza with the police in the evening, at 6 o'clock. And I think that would get the people just coming home from work, and make it more of a standing appointment. So, if you said, you know, the first Tuesday in the morning, and the third Tuesday, for example, in the evening, that way you had a routine, and I think we would really start to improve, because that was the one thing, we only had about, you know, up to 10 people at the end, you know, and they were coming in late, so maybe it was a little early. But also, you know, we all know that it's election season, and there are, you know, three of us going around town, and meeting people at various venues. And just in case people don't know, you can save the date for March 30th, which is when the League of Women voters have invited us to come here and have a meet the candidates. And it's a really good opportunity for everyone to come and ask their questions, and for the answers to be in public, in front of everyone, which is great. And then I just wanted to encourage anybody that if they should hear any rumors, especially of personal nature, or, you know, anything they think is inappropriate, they should please try to reach out to the subject of those. I know, I have a website, people can reach me through kellyreid.com, or through the town, and I just encourage everyone to please go to the source. If you hear something that doesn't seem right, or especially if it's negative, please try to track that down. Don't believe everything you hear, don't believe the rumors. Thank you.
Okay, Kelly.
Thank you. I, too, attended the Chiefs dinner, and it was great, Indian Creek Island, don't get to go there that often, but we do, it's absolutely worth it. Went to the Miami Dade County League of Cities monthly, monthly meeting, which is informative and fun. I, too, was able to attend Coffee with the Cops, which I think is a great idea, it's one of the, you know, I'm glad Kathy Kennedy had floated the idea, even though it was invented in Hawthorne, California. I think it worked here in Bay Harbor Islands, and it was a lot of, it was a lot of love in the room, and it was a very, very nice event. You know, I guess it was last week, I attended the Miami Dade County Public School Audit and Budget Committee, which I'm a member of, and it was interesting, it was, there were several topics discussed, the main one being a relationship issue that the school board has with the Friends of W L R N, which I wasn't too happy about. We discussed for two and a half hours, and it was not, it was not a lot of fun, but, you know, we did finally get through the business that we had to do, and, you know, it was a fairly productive meeting. And that's my point, Mr. Mayor.
Great. Let me brief, I also attended the Dade Chiefs Dinner in Indian Creek Village. In fact, it's always a pleasure to go there to the country club, we have members that are residents. In addition, I also attended the monthly League of Cities meeting, and as Commissioner Hayman noted about the SMART Plan, that's our main focus at the league this year. Our president, Commissioner Francis Suarez, has initiated transportation as his issue for the year, and we at the league are supporting heavily the SMART Plan, both at the county and at the state level. In addition, I was in Tallahassee last week, in opposed to one of the utility bills that, if passed as, as it was originally worded, would strip municipalities and all political subdivisions of any type of regulation related to utilities for phone service, specifically this is for 5G networks. Gladly, because of our lobbying, we were able to get our state senator, Senator Campbell, to vote against it in the committee, and even the committee chair strongly worded his comments, even though he voted for it, that utilities need to work with the League of Cities in order to make sure that we have some evil footing. So, it's, it's important that we're up there, but it's also important that our delegation and our members are hearing what we're saying, because at the end of the day, they may be legislators, but they all live in communities, and they all have neighbors just like we do. So, it's good that our voice is being heard in Tallahassee. That being said, we're going to move on to...
Just to clarify, for some people out there, understand, he's talking about the regulation of utilities, talking about utility poles. In other words, AT&amp;T and so forth, they're talking about where they want to put the poles, potentially right in front of your homes. What we're up here trying to protect and stop in Tallahassee, is that we can make sure that not putting the poles right in front of your house, or worse.
If we under, if they, and one of the examples that was given is, what if you have a portion of your city, or your entire municipality that's undergrounded? This would allow the utility companies to actually put up holes after you spent the time and the money undergrounding, so...
On our cost.
Yeah, it just, it's astounding, so it's glad to hear that the legislators are hearing our voices up there, so. That being said, we're going to go to public comment, and we have first, number two.
You skipped one.
Number two, Dade League.
The Dade League.
Oh, the, I mean, Dade League. Oh. Oh, sorry, oh, I didn't even get that. Yeah, sorry, okay. We have the Dade League designate? That's right, we did put that on there. Traditionally, we've done this around the installation meeting, but I was told that to meet that deadline, we have to do this. So, I guess normally, we have an appointment, and then we have, I guess, an alternate.
Who was the alternate?
Bob, Yaffi is our...
I'm the alternate.
And Kelly's the alternate. Is there any, I mean, Bob, you've done a great job, so...
Yep.
You going to do another year?
Right.
Okay, very good. Okay, so, do you need a motion for that?
I make a motion that Bob continue on as our representative.
Okay, a second, all is in favor?
Aye.
All right, very good.
Kelly is the alternate.
Yeah, Kelly is the alternate, okay. Very good. All right, public comment. We have John Vedder.
Thank you, council members. I'm John Vedder, I'm the guy that wrote you and copied other council members a letter.
And your address for the record, please?
10350 West Bay Harbor Drive, apartment 10H, Bay Harbor Islands, Florida, 33154.
Thank you.
And voters are angry in America, that's no secret. I'm angry. I've lost 61 pounds walking around this island, and seeing a lot, and it's all expressed in that letter. And the response I got from you guys demonstrates, I guess I was naive, I thought maybe they're not aware of all these issues. Maybe not everybody walks around, because you see a lot when you walk. And I thought, well, they'll see all these issues, be appreciative, and take action to fix things. But instead, the response tells me, well, after I thought about it more, demonstrate that there's a structural flaw in the organization of our government, and that citizens of this island are grossly underrepresented, and it's through no fault of the way people behave. If somebody on the West Island wants a basketball in their front yard, I don't care. If people want to build more condos here to increase the tax base, people on the West Island should be all for it. People here should be, too, but after a while, they had enough. I don't know anybody that's in favor of all this mass construction, the rule, the law passing, grandfathering in, all these things for 8 o'clock start times, the last line on it says the people want it. I don't know anybody that want it. Maybe the people that are buying the units, maybe the developers. So, because of the moral hazard issue, we need to address our structure of government. And even if we have East Island residents on the council, perhaps they're in the developers' pockets. And so, if they're receiving contributions from the developers, they should recuse themselves and vote on development issues. The speed bumps, I'm for big gnarly speed bumps. That's the only way to, you know, the police are reluctant to enforce the laws, they say, because they get complaints from residents, and they want to be lenient with residents. But that puts the burden on pedestrians and bicyclists, the most vulnerable, and that ain't right, I just want to enforce the laws. But they won't. At least put a big gnarly speed bump there, so they'll, they'll at least slow down before that gravel truck makes that wide corner sweeping into the other lane. And it'd also make the bike lanes no parking zones, and it'd make the construction companies, I know that the parking bill is, I got 10 seconds, is going to be considered tonight, but I'd make all the construction vehicles park on their damn land, and not in the street. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. All right, next we have Vincent Martino.
Good evening, Vincent Martino, 1050 93rd Street. A couple of different things. Next couple of weeks, we have the picnic, and I was in environmental committee, and I understand there's a possibility of maybe joining, well, it's not the front, but the environmental committee with disaster and preparedness committee, if that's something that was floated before I heard about that, and I think that's a great idea. I'd like to be part of that, if that committee does indeed come about. So, whatever it takes, I'd be more than happy to pitch in and see if I can get somebody else to, you know, to join as well, but I think we need it, it's very important, so let's, just let me know, and, you know, we'll proceed that way. If we can put up a table at the picnic in a couple of weeks, I'd be happy to man that, and try to grab some people and see if they're interested. We had a couple of people last year, and unfortunately, you know, they talked a big game, but didn't really come forward when the time came. So, I'm there for you, if we're going to do this, please, you know, let me know. I'm glad to hear that meet the candidates is scheduled for the 30th of the month, so that's a very good thing, very positive to hear that. And I did, at the last meeting, I did, I believe I heard that, and it's not on tonight's agenda, so I guess it was pulled, that there was a consideration to put on the agenda to put back the start time to 8 o'clock for construction and destruction, demolition, et cetera. So, I hope we don't go backwards on that, it's a safety issue, there's kids walking around, going to school, I hope that that's not going to be considered, and please keep that in mind for the future. I do appreciate your service, thank you very much.
Next we have Victor Maya.
Victor Maya, 1155 103rd Street. Just to follow up on Vincent's latest comment, I appreciate that we did not see a revisitation of the construction start times on today's agenda. I'm concerned that after the election, it's going to be back on the agenda again, or the next time one of the developers comes here and asks for change in it, it's going to be back on the agenda again. This is a tremendous quality of life issue for us. We are being bombarded with massive construction from all sides at all times. We have numerous projects that were grandfathered in despite the being, the way that the ordinance was set up, numerous projects were grandfathered in until 8 o'clock, and I'm looking at you, Josh, because we talked about this beforehand, and you assured me, you know, that there wouldn't be the number of projects on there that were snuck in at the last minute for this 8 o'clock start times. A lot of them haven't even started yet. We're a year beyond, and they've been quote-unquote grandfathered in, you know, under this ordinance. They haven't signed any agreements to build or anything like that, there is no damage or input, yet, you know, these particular development projects are going to be, you know, able to start at 8:00 A.M. And I just think, you know, that's, that there needs to be, you know, consideration for the residents of the community in terms of that start's time. And that's my fear, is that we'll backtrack and start all over again. I also want to address a quality of life issue with respect to traffic. And we've said this over and over and over again, that there needs to be, and we've heard, well, we've had meetings with Val Harbor, and with Surfside, but one lane goes down for, you know, a half hour, you know, in Surfside there, in front of the temple, okay? And traffic is packed up, so it takes well over an hour, you know, to get over our causeway bridge. The mall on 96th Street is going to go through massive expansion. We really need to be proactive in terms of dealing with these traffic issues. And frankly, I'm not seeing it. I'm not seeing an effort, you know, to say, hey, what can we do to minimize this, you know, how can we better communicate when there is, you know, an hour delay, you know, coming over the bridge to help us? These are quality of life issues that are important to all of us. Finally, I would be remiss in saying that I am disappointed that two of our candidates for office have accepted a donation from developers and attorneys representing developers. I just think that that's a conflict, and we shouldn't do it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Take a comment, Shirley. Fine, I think I mentioned this to you. I did have the experience of driving east on, you know, a Friday night a couple of weeks ago, trying to get to Surfside from Bay Harbor, it took a great deal of time because it was bumper-to-bumper traffic, and the only issue that I had was that I was curious what was going on, so I called our police department, and they didn't know, because nobody told them, and I understand that. So, I called Surfside, and Surfside told me it was because Val Harbor blocked the lane in front of one of the hotels. My point is that, you know, the police department sees better lines of communication, so that if there is something going on, at least all of the three cities know about it, and know what the cause of it is, and perhaps, you know, one of the departments, not ours, because the buildup of the traffic wasn't in Bay Harbor Islands, but in Surfside or Val Harbor, they should have been out there directing traffic, because it was misery for, it appeared to be.
That was really a perfect storm, because not only did you have that, what Surfside didn't know, there was a car accident further down on Collins.
It wasn't that night, that was...
That was the same night?
That same night. No, you're also, you're talking about, it's happened a few times, I know you're talking about the one where the causeway was shut on Saturday night, that happens.
We normally, we normally talk.
But is there an agreement, like when, like, for instance, when Bob was saying, does Val Harbor or Surfside, like, call the station and allow...
Schedule work? Normally, they'd let us know for...
No, this was a Saturday, this was a Friday night, and if there's an incident in Val Harbor, I don't know whether it was an incident, or whether there was an event at one of the hotels or something, and there was a lot of traffic. And I think that, you know, the Val Harbor P D should have called Bay Harbor, or Surfside, and said, we just want to let you know what's going on, so if your residents, or an issue or whatever it is, it's just a matter of communicating so that we know what's going on.
We communicate probably not as frequently as we should, and normally, we go back and forth with that.
But we have to, I mean, I agree with Bob, I was actually coming, some of the other nights, coming the other direction, heading west, and I got to tell you, in Surfside, it is backed up beyond belief, there was zero police presence. Everybody's blocking the block, blocking the box creates more traffic, and that was a problem. Val Harbor had one officer out, and quite honestly, wasn't doing much, was sitting in the corner, so just talking to somebody. So, there, I mean, the fact of the matter is, when I came into Bay Harbor, I actually saw a couple of police officers there on some of the streets, which was helpful, but, you know, there was nothing, Surfside was backing everything up. We have to communicate.
But in Bay Harbor, when there's an issue, our police do a great job, I mean, they're out at every intersection, and they're pulling traffic, and trying to get it going, but in our neighbors, they don't do that.
I think the suggestion is great, just having that communication, so everybody knows what's going on, because our residents are not going, I'm not going to call Val Harbor, I'm going to call Bay Harbor, and I'm going to ask them what's going on.
Also, let me, actually, I want to follow up one more thing Victor stated, and I want to ask Marlene. Marlene, the grandfathering was only supposed to have been for the projects that had started prior to the ordinance. Are there other ones that are now extending beyond that?
No, it was for projects that had permits, or had approval prior to the ordinance, yes.
Has anybody else...
It's a fixed list, it doesn't...
And it doesn't change, so there's nobody extending...
Including the gateways.
Including the gateways.
Right. So Victor, I'm not sure who, if you find someone starting earlier, please report it to Marlene and let us know, because if that's the situation, we'll take care of it.
Josh, I think what he means is that they had a month's notice, so all they had to do was submit plans. It wasn't even, didn't even have to be their final plan, like one of them submitted on June 3rd, three days or five days before the meeting where we voted that in. So you know what I'm saying? Like, this is the list. It's huge and it's inappropriate. I didn't vote for it because of that. It's terrible.
That is the ordinance as it is. What I'm trying to explain to you is there is nobody else that's trying to sneak in afterwards. It is one of those.
But there's dozens on both islands, so, you know, this really should be revisited. I'd like to see that revisited.
Okay. Let's finish public comment. Frances Newhat.
Frances Newhat, 9920 West Broadway Drive. Since signing March 3rd, 2016, the anti-BDS movement, boycotting of Israel, council after an entire year still continues to ignore citizens and residents the right to a public discussion on Church by the Sea BDS movement as an agenda item. The following timeline describes this council issue. On March 3rd, 2016, town council unanimously approved signing Section 2-4 against boycotting. On May 16th, 2016, town attorney legal memorandum to council, town manager, and P&amp;Z board, Church by the Sea, Church of Christ, and involvement with the BDS movement was quoted as such ordinance has no acclarity to the zoning process. April 5th, 2016, town election, there was no discussion on Church by the Sea BDS movement. June 18th, 2016, church leaders of Church by the Sea allegedly denied their affiliation with the United Church of Christ, refused to commit divesting their pensions or foundations assets. July 13th, 2016, town council meeting, discussion on Church by the Sea BDS movement, defective broadcasting on Bay Harbor Public Broadcasting Channels 77 and 88. July 19th, 2016, P&amp;Z board public hearing, Church by the Sea BDS movement, no one was allowed to discuss this subject matter. July 23rd, 2016, listed material from the Church by the Sea clearly indicating relationships with United Church of Christ, and allegedly the BDS movement is truly anti-Semitic and as a major purpose is to destroy Israel. On October 17th, 2016, town council meeting, there were bullying citizens and residents' right to speak on subject matter, Church by the Sea BDS movement at a council meeting. Council agreeing to remove council public hearings, Section 23-5, 8.1, from town bylaws. On 11/14/2016, town council meeting, although there was an existing religious institution on the second floor of Bank of America, council used the Raoulupa law to eliminate council public hearings, Section 23-5, 8.1, and ignore public discussion of Church by the Sea BDS movement as a agenda item. And on 1/19/2017, with the appeal, no one was allowed to speak on Church by the Sea BDS movement. Now presently, antisemitism is rising with bomb threats towards children in Jewish facilities going on right now, and seeing the growth of the Arab League in this BDS movement. Therefore, within April 4th, 2017, town election upon us, perhaps an incumbent and/or a candidate will take a stand and address the safety issue.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you for letting me finish the sentence.
Sure. Next we have former Mayor Linda Zilber. Come on down.
I'm going to change things a little bit. I live in West Bay Harbor of the West Island. We have had our rallies done in front of my home across the street. I'd like to say to the town manager and to all of you, they are fantastic. These people work diligently. They never stop. They clean up. They don't need respect. They are fantastic. So for any of you that have them coming in the future, know how much I appreciated them working in front of my home.
Thank you. Thank you. That's it for public comments.
I had some more, got to work to do.
Yeah, we have more.
They do excellent work.
All right, we're going to move on to the consent agenda. Number six, you need to poll vote for number six, so.
I need to, somebody to make a motion.
I'll make a motion.
A second. All right, motion second. Poll vote, please.
Yes. Councilmember Yaffe?
Four.
Councilmember Chikosha?
Four.
Councilmember Saba?
Four.
Councilmember Reed?
Four.
Councilmember Fuller?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bruder?
Four.
Mayor Leonard?
Four.
It's unanimous.
All right, very good. Number three.
Item three, consideration and approval of a resolution requested by councilmember Reed establishing a servant honor code for the elected and appointed public officials.
All right, councilmember Reed.
I originally put this on the January agenda for a discussion item and you all gave me the go-ahead to bring it up in February, and then in February, you wanted to hear from Mr. Centorino, who has graciously come to join us today, and I'd like to invite the director of the Miami-Dade Commission on Ethics, Joe Centorino, to please answer your questions or make a presentation, whatever you like.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Joe Centorino. I'm the executive director of the Miami-Dade Commission on Ethics, and it's an honor to be here. I've not been to this chamber before. I think it's a beautiful chamber. I've been to just about every council chamber in the county, and I'm glad to finally make it to Bay Harbor. And I'm glad to answer any questions about either of this item or the civility oath item that you have. I will just tell you briefly the genesis of these items. The Ethics Commission, which as you know, has jurisdiction over not only the county government, but over municipal government in terms of the enforcement of the ethics ordinance, took it upon itself to make a recommendation that the county and the municipalities within the county consider adopting the R code as well as the civility oath. So this was intentionally not something that was imposed. In other words, it didn't, even though the county government has that, has the ability to impose those kinds of requirements, it was felt that these were the kinds of things that, you know, need to come from within. And if a community or municipality was interested in doing these things, then we should encourage them to do it, but it was not something that was going to be imposed. Briefly, the R code is really, to me, it's the essence of public service and it's, it's tempting to raise the bar, though, for some people in the, around the county, and it's not directed at any, you know, any individuals or any municipality whatsoever. But certainly within my career in not only county government, but also as a prosecutor at the state attorney's office, there were times when there was serious, serious corruption or serious misconduct going on within a municipality or within a county, and that was witnessed or was, that some public servants, some county employees, let's say, were aware of and didn't think it was their job to report. So the situation, and I'm not talking about minor, you know, technical or even ethical issues, we're talking really about people stealing, people maybe taking bribes and things of that nature, serious matters. And it isn't, you know, to me, it's understood, you're understood, if you're a public servant, your job is to protect the public, all right? This goes with it. I mean, this is, there's nothing in here that is at all, at all with the conception that any of you or any of the people who work for your town surely have, have the concept that, you know, you're here to protect the public and if you see something and know something that's seriously damaging to the public interest, well, then you need to, you need to do something about that. You need to make it known to the right people. And I've seen, you know, situations where people just didn't think it was their job and didn't, and elected to ignore serious and sometimes criminal wrongdoing. So we created this policy, at least a suggested policy. The county adopted it unanimously. It's been adopted in a number of municipalities. In fact, you're adjoining the municipalities, the North Bay Village and Surfside have adopted both policies, both the R code and the civility oath unanimously. Others have adopted, the counties have said adopted the R code. I think they're bringing up the civility oath within a month or so. But, you know, the idea of the R code is to create an expectation that it's people's job. Now, if people do not adhere to that, it's intended to be primarily an administrative policy. In other words, it's not something that the Ethics Commission will be getting involved in for the most part. You have a manager and most, all of your employees are under the control of the manager and it would be up to the manager to enforce this as he saw fit. With regard to yourselves, since the manager is not over you, the Commission on Ethics would be in a position to impose a letter of reprimand if somebody were to violate the R code. But it's intended to have some flexibility to it. It's not something that's intended to be a law enforcement type situation, but really an expectation that people who work for the government will protect the government and will not, in their roles, you know, ignore serious wrongdoing if and when they confront it. And so that's really the concept of the R code. I'll be happy to answer any questions about that. If you'd like me to speak also on the other item, the civility oath, I'll certainly do.
Isaac?
I have a couple of questions. Do, how are you doing? Welcome. Didn't realize that you'd ever been here before. It's good to see you again. Do paid employees have a different standard or a different ethics code applied to them versus elected officials?
Well, under the, if you're trying to ask me under the ethics code, the ethics ordinance, there are different categories, okay? There are elected officials, there are advisory board members, there are employees and so forth. And while many of the ethics code provisions apply to all of them, there are some that apply specifically to, say, elected officials or to people on advisory boards. There is some difference in some of the expectations depending on which of those categories somebody falls under, okay? So, yeah, that's, I'm just talking about the ordinance now, I'm not talking about the R code, but that's, which is separate.
Right, right, and that's what's my question.
Yes.
You answered that. So does this, does the honor, like, what are the differences, the major differences between the R code and the normal code of ethics that we need to comply with, either on the county level or on the state level?
Well, there's nothing in the, in the ethics code that talks about your requirement that you report wrongdoing. Nothing in there about that, all right? So this is something that, it's really, it should be within everybody's concept of public service, but it isn't written down. And so this is the idea of having R codes, you write it down and you can use it to train employees. In fact, this week, I'm going over to Surfside to do a training session for their employees on the R code, what the expectations are and so forth.
When you, did you write a letter to the Herald that was published in the op-ed section in December of 2015?
I don't know the date of it, but if it's about the R code, it probably did. I think I did write a, well, I think I wrote an op-ed.
Well, I found a letter that you wrote. And to quote you, it says, "The R code revives a long ignored requirement from 1964 that requires county officials to report criminal misconduct in government to authorities." When you wrote that letter, do you remember writing it? Was it more, when I read the rest of the article, it seemed like it was really focused and targeted towards the county, which is a government with, you know, many, I guess 13 elected officials and thousands of employees, where the manager would have the time and the opportunity to appoint staff to actually set up, you know, an internal court system to be able to address these types of things. Is the 1964 law that you referred to in your article still on the books?
Well, it's our law. That was a county administrative directive.
Which we have to comply with anyway.
Not applicable to municipalities, only to the county.
Let me ask you one more question, well, a couple more questions, but has, you know, has the standards for audit changed regarding municipalities, their financial, their fiscal audits, their financial audits? Have the rules changed regarding the audits of financial statements for municipalities according to the U.S. Auditor General, let's say, in the past 10 years?
I don't, I have no idea, but I'm not aware that it has.
Well, are you familiar with Section 10.554, which relates to, you know, audits of municipalities? And let me quote, it says, you know, "This particular section addresses violations of any provisions of contracts, fraud, illegal acts or abuse that occurred or likely to occur," which is part of our annual audit process. I mean, I, you know, I, for one, I'm on the, you know, I'm on the Children's Trust, I represent the Dade League of Cities, on the Florida League of Cities, and I'm a council member of Bay Harbor Islands. I'm pretty confident that all three of those organizations during their audit process send me a letter or give me a phone call relating to any, relating to my knowledge of any illegal act, fraud, or any of the above items that are addressed in Section 10.554 of the rules of the Auditor General on the federal level. Don't you think that this might be a little bit duplicitous regarding the, you know, the fact that we, you know, we have to comply with your, you know, the county normal ethics code?
I understand your question, your point, and there are actually, there's a county, under the Citizens' Bill of Rights in the county, that does apply to municipalities. There's a requirement of adequate audits, where audits be done. This is not an auditing issue, okay? This is something that individuals within the, within a municipality are required to do something about. And this is not, the audit, you know, there are awful lot of thefts and misconduct that don't get picked up in an audit. I mean, the audit is a good thing to have, and I imagine you have a competent firm that does your auditing, but I wouldn't regard this as really related to the audit. This puts an obligation on all of the public servants within the community, not an outside auditing firm, to, you know, to actively protect the public interest. So I wouldn't regard this as the same, I don't think the auditing that you cited, although it's a good thing, creates that kind of requirement.
I think what he's referring to is that we're asked annually, I know I'm asked annually, if there's anything you're aware of. So I think what he's alluding to is that we're already, we're already put on notice annually, if, you know, this is your opportunity to disclose, is there anything to say? And, you know, I'm asked every year, you know, and I'm assuming everyone on the council is annually.
We all get to audit.
Yeah, we all, we're all asked the question.
Right, we're asked, are you aware of any abuse, fraud, illegal acts that are taking place within your organization? So, and when I read the R code, it seems like the crux of it, I mean, aside from the requirement of the municipality creating an appeal process and a board and a hearing process, et cetera, et cetera, really says, hey, look, if you see something, say something. And I, you know, I could almost, I could almost say I accept this from my rank in file staff, but for us, we're, you know, we, you know, through our audit company, we're asked these questions. I mean, and believe me, I would fire any audit firm that would, you know, get a response if, you know, if one of us said, yes, we know of an illegal act, that they didn't take further action, either to contact, you know, the manager, you know, contact the lawyer. take further action, either to contact, you know, the manager, you know, contact the lawyer, or contact you.
Thank you. Although, what you've described is a question. It's not the requirement of an answer. What the Honor Code does is require that, that somebody come forward, whether they're asked or not. Asking the question is a good thing, but it doesn't require an answer to it.
All right, do we have other questions?
Yeah, let's just say, I mean, Josh. After you know that your deposition is complete.
That's okay. I appreciate that you're going to the points. You know, I just, I don't like, you know, I don't want to pass more regulations that might cause a burden, you know, I'm not worried about it. You know, I, for one, am not worried about it, believe me. But, you know, I'd hate to cause, in a town of 6,000 people and 60 staff, to, you know, to have to set up an infrastructure that, you know, that deals with, you know, our compliance with our Honor Code. When we're already required to comply with the Ethics Code and the state Ethics Code, plus we're audited under the rules of the U.S. Auditor General.
Yeah, okay, well, let me just say this. Personally, I don't mind answering the question twice, so it's not a big deal to me. That being said, I'm just creating a very simple, the same question I asked Kelly last time. It's your recommendation that we move forward with both of these, as simple as that?
It was my commission's recommendation. The Ethics Commission, which are my bosses, it's a five-member board that I am accountable for, that passed this resolution and that directed me to, you know, bring it to the attention of municipalities. We're not imposing it. It's totally up to this body to either adopt it or not, or to change it, or, you know, you can craft it to whatever you think is needed, or you could have your manager decide how to implement it, but no, that's, yes, it was the Commission on Ethics that requested that it be considered by every municipality.
Good enough for me.
Yeah, I have a question, because one of my concerns is the workload over at your department, because this specifically makes reference to that the commission in your office is going to be really the authority over us. So, in other words, if someone feels that something is not being done properly, they're going to call your office and make, you know, make an allegation, and then your office is going to investigate it. And, you know, from my experience, you know, in my time here, you know, in town, you know, we've, you know, there's been many, many, many investigations that have not resulted in, you know, in something wrong, but it has taken, from my understanding, an enormous amount of time and resources in looking at the nuances of operations of this town. And my concern is that, you know, obviously, as we all know, there is real corruption, there is real fraud that goes on in South Florida and in the United States as far as public corruption, but my understanding is, what's going to happen when you have more phone calls, more inquiries that are going to bog down your office? And I appreciate what you're doing. I mean, let me just preface it by saying, for the record, for those that don't know, I used to work in government. I used to be an administrator. And I wish something was like this on the books, where more people that were employees were doing what they were supposed to do. Because when I was in the position, I actually reported real fraud, real public corruption, and I went to the FBI. And unfortunately, I actually lost my job as a result of my actions, but of course, now there's a major corruption investigation by the Federal Bureau of Investigation and the U.S. Attorney's Office. So, I'm glad that it took four years for it to happen, but my concern is that if you're having all the municipalities do this, is it going to bog down your limited staff from doing really your core purpose, which is really fighting corruption? And that's it. Because the way it's written here in Section D, you guys, you know, anyone can make, you know, a phone call, you know, and guess what? That's another couple months of an investigator's time looking at something, which may be, oh, someone said something at a meeting, or someone alluded to something, but there's no real justification, there's no real need to it, it's just a statement.
We don't see it as a problem. I mean, frankly, the way it's designed, of course, most of it is administrative, though it doesn't even come to us, all right? The county mayor or the managers or the strong layers in the county have the jurisdiction over most of the people that would be affected by this, all right? And it hasn't created a problem with the county, and this is, frankly, this is something where initially it didn't even include the elected officials. It was only included by employees. We decided we should include the elected officials. I think the public, you know, or even your employees thinking, hey, you know, if I'm subject to this, why aren't my bosses not subject to it? So, we thought, you know, it'd be a good idea to include them. I don't see that this is going to generate very many investigations. It has not to this point.
So, I was going to ask you that.
At all, and it just hasn't. I mean, frankly, this is not the kind of thing, not the kind of thing really that members of a board like this are likely to become aware of so much as people who are in the trenches that, you know, see something going on, you know, say, at the desk next to them. And in my experience, you know, unless an elected official themselves is involved in wrongdoing, some, very often they do come forward and at least make something known to the right person. So, I'm not, you know, I'm not saying that we might not have to, we might, but really, I don't see that as a significant issue.
No, it's interesting you said that, because every time I speak to you on the phone, Joe, and I've known you for so many years, you always mention, you know, how great Bay Harbor is and that we don't get complaints, and it's one of those few places where things are done right, you know, we don't seem to have issues. But how many times has have individuals that are elected or constitutional officers or employees been investigated by your office in the last two years, do you, you know?
For anything?
Or an Honor Code violation?
No, 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 I'm just saying...
There haven't been for an Honor Code issue, but...
Well, not Honor Codes, I don't know.
We do hundreds of investigations, you know, but most of them probably don't involve elected officials, but certainly have done a number of elected officials investigations. We don't simply open up an investigation simply upon a bare allegation, though. There has to be some information that's credible, that may or may not be true, but there's some reason to say that there could be credibility to it before we would open up an investigation.
Is there a particular one that you favor? Because what we're given here is there's the resolution, but there's North Miami, and then there's, we're also given Surfside. So, is there a particular...
Well, each of those municipalities adapted it.
Okay.
I mean, apparently, maybe their city or town attorney looked at it and said, "Look, you know, for us to do this, we should do it this way," you know? So, it's really, that's really up to the municipality in terms of how... I think what you have here just simply adopts the county, I don't know if you have it, but there is a county implementing order.
Correct.
That really summarizes and goes through the whole thing. Now, if you wanted to, or thought that there should be changes made to accommodate whatever special issues or structure you have here, you'd certainly be free to do that if you wanted to.
Well, like, one of the things I found very interesting is, under, what is it, B4, it says that we could, that we would, I'm sorry, yes, no, no, no. There's a provision here where we would ask for opinions from your office, but I've always been under the opinion that, and always advised, that we can also go to our town attorney and to opine on an ethics issue, that we had that choice, and so...
Well, you always can, you certainly can always consult with your town attorney about anything. However, on an ethics matter, it is the opinion of the Ethics Commission which is binding. No municipal attorney has an opinion to give a binding opinion, in other words, one that we have to follow. So, you know, if it's an issue that's, you know, unclear, you know, and there are many attorneys, county attorney included, that call us regularly and say, "Look, we're looking at this issue, and do you agree with us on this?" Just to, you know, to make sure that we're on the same page. But certainly, you can always talk to your town attorney, that's what you're here for.
You know, I'd like to make that change, because it does stay here, that actually, it says here that it may request a binding opinion from the Ethics Commission. I'd like to also, you know, amend that, to put in that we could get an opinion from our town attorney, because sometimes, you know, your office, if we call and we get Mike or, I'm sorry, Victoria, I'm sorry, one of the, yeah, some of the other town attorneys in your office, you know, sometimes we can just get someone else faster and say, "Okay, we can shoot an email over." So, at least give them that opportunity to also opine.
My only suggestion is that, I mean, there should only be one place in the county where you can get a binding opinion. You can always go to, you know, get an opinion from here, but I mean, in terms of that one that binds other people on a matter like this, this comes from the Ethics Commission, I think that the system we have has worked very well for the county, and most, I think, municipal attorneys will agree that they value the, particularly when it involves an elected official, which becomes very difficult for a municipal official, attorney, to tell the municipal official, "No, no, you can't do that."
We've done that very well, actually.
Anyway, but the independence we have is, I think, one thing that most municipalities have come to value, and certainly we have a good relationship with just about every municipal attorney's office that I know of, that when it comes to an ethics issue, they will come to us for an opinion that has some precedential value.
Okay, well, are there any other comments?
Ron, what type of administrative process, if any, do we have in place now if, you know, a complaint or an allegation could arise under the Honor Code? How would you handle that?
Come to me, and I'd probably talk to the town attorney, whatever it was, and from there, we'd probably call up the Ethics Commission. And we'd probably then go to the Ethics Commission.
But the Ethics Commission isn't going to handle complaints against employees?
We're not. If somebody, if there was a question about how to interpret the Ethics Code, in other words, would this apply to this, we probably would, we would give the opinion, but we're not going to get involved in the enforcement aspect.
So, any type of administrative disciplinary process that a municipality has in place would be satisfactory?
Absolutely. I mean, there are some other...
It would be investigated by, you know, we'd be investigated, we'd sit down with the employee, like any, if it was a regular disciplinary matter. And then they would be subject to discipline, whether it was justification or if it was serious reprimand.
I thought the, you know, the reporting, where the standard seems pretty broad, and I was, you know, you said you haven't really had very many complaints, so I was just wondering whether it would sort of prompt a lot of unfounded allegations.
Well, we're pretty good at distinguishing things like, you know, personality issues. I mean, it's pretty common, frankly, that people think that we, if they think that their boss is not treating them fairly, that, you know, that's some type of ethics issue. Well, it isn't. But we do get those kinds of things. We don't spend much time on them. We usually inform the people, and, well, look, this is not the right place.
I mean, are you getting much in the way of, you know, allegations of people, you know, administrative officials or other elected officials committing crimes, you know, bribes or doing other type of unlawful activity, as opposed to, you know, the manager isn't treating you right? Since the adoption of the Honor Code, you said you really haven't had very many complaints?
No, there've been a couple, but not, no, not very few. And honestly, this wasn't put here, I mean, if we thought it was, it really needed a, you know, legal enforcement mechanism, we would have adopted one. But we really think this is something that requires some discretion, and there are, as your manager points out, there are some matters that would be pretty petty and probably, you know, you talk to somebody about it. But I mean, in situations where somebody is sitting next door, is sitting next to somebody who's, you know, running a private business out of a state public office, you know, and that's serious stuff, and that's the kind of thing people get fired for. But somebody's obligation to bring that forward to your manager, I think, is a positive thing.
All right, thank you.
How many municipalities have adopted this?
I don't know the exact number. I know that, as I said, North Bay Village have adopted it, so has, or the county has adopted it, and so has Surfside, I believe North Miami has adopted it.
Opalaka.
Opalaka adopted it after they first voted against it. And then, the only municipality that has voted against it was Opalaka until I showed up and made a plea to them, and they changed the vote.
So, hi.
I think there's a couple, I know a couple elements that are looking at it and so forth, but...
I just have a couple of other examination questions.
I don't tell them every afternoon, man.
No, but I play one on TV. Do you have an idea, more or less, of how many emails you get in a week? How many emails get sent to the Commission on Ethics, more or less, when you die, I won't hold you to this?
Asking for a legal opinion or just...
No, more or less, no, I'm asking, you're the CEO, you're the executive director of the Ethics, you know, the Ethics Commission. How many, more or less, how many emails do you guys get a week?
Well, you say email, I mean, I get a lot of emails a week, but you're talking about emails that allege some wrongdoing. I get emails for a lot of reasons, but I mean, I certainly get a number of them a week. I can't tell you about the agency, because other people in my agencies, I mean, sometimes they'll investigate, or sometimes the attorney gets it, or one of the attorneys makes it. So, I'm not the only input for them, but I get a number of them every week.
Do you have an idea of how many of those emails are generated out of Bay Harbor Islands and have our names on it?
I can't give you a number or percentage.
Well, I could probably give you a number.
Certainly have gotten a number.
I can give you a number. It's probably around a half a dozen a week.
Let's go Google.
No, no, it has nothing to do with Google.
It's those complaints.
I get carbon copied on correspondence that include your office or you personally. Yeah, almost daily.
Of course, I think I know what you're referring to. And certainly, you get lots of correspondence that's placed on file.
Okay.
Because it doesn't allege something that falls under our code.
I think we're, yeah, I mean... And it just, you know, my point is that, you know, I'd just like to go on record as to my personal resistance to, you know, to this type of thing, to this type of thing, because understanding the practicalities of raising the bar, even if it's imaginary anymore, where you have an environment where there are specific citizens that bombard us and your office with what has clearly turned out to be completely frivolous type of allegations for, you know, the last several years. Because, and I'm saying frivolous with confidence, because you yourself tonight said that you haven't opened an investigation against any of us, at least in the last two years.
I don't know if I could say that for sure, but I can say that very few, that very few investigations have been opened. But again, it has to be the level of, okay, this alleges a violation of the Ethics Code, something that we have, something, people, you know, allege a lot of things that just don't fall under the Ethics Code, and we don't waste much time on those things.
Yeah, and I'd hate to see our staff waste much time on it.
We have public comment, and then before we get into anything, so Francis Newhart.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Joe.
Francis Newhart, 9920 West Broadway Drive. I finally told you more, and I thank you very much. We, the citizens, love having these people, and the reason for that is because we have nobody else to go to. Not everyone can run to an attorney like Mr. Sherman and protect themselves, especially an appointed by council attorney who's going to defend you no matter what. So, this is embarrassing, that you people who are opposing this are the ones who are really the ones who should not be opposing it. And I must tell you, the last two years of elections have been a disgrace. Two years ago, bullying and the, everything going on, we had a report constantly. You talk about every week complaining, at least he tries, he speaks to you. He might not have a formal report, but I know for a fact that people have been reprimanded for their behavior. And I appreciate having this law here. If anything can make our citizens stronger and listen to them, because you surely aren't, you surely aren't listening to us, and I must tell you, that last election, I hate to mention Doris Murano, but you had no permission to throw out election ballots without the permission of that family. And two years ago, 100 ballots were missing. We could not calculate where they came from. And we went to Mr. Centurino. Sure, you didn't get reprimanded for it, but at least we were heard and resented to Mr. Centurino. And you constantly say how innocent you people are, you're not, and especially the person who's making all these faces. I am very surprised that you are still here after what you've done to so many people here and outside. Thank you.
Thank you. Victor Maya.
Victor Maya, 1155 103rd Street. I think it's shameful, shameful that an Honor Code is receiving so much pushback from this council based on, oh, there's too much work for my... council based on, oh, there's too much work for my, for my, for my town? Oh, there's too much work on the organization that's going to look at it? It is absolutely shameful. This is an Honor Code. And I will tell you, my complaint against the mayor was not frivolous. You can go on his webpage and look at it. I will read to you, okay, the conclusion. The evidence seems to indicate that Mayor Leonard exploited his official position by using an agency of the town relieves to retaliate against or send a message to a critic of town management who threatened to run against him in the next election cycle. The mayor's role in the quote anonymous end quote complaint and the timing of the code enforcement investig, inspection, less than 24 hours after a confrontational meeting with a resident of the building, may in fact be purely coincidental, as the mayor insists. And here's a key point, but the circumstances remain suspect. Okay? That's not frivolous, Mr. Salver. That's real. Okay? And to push back against an Honor Code is absolutely, you know, the height of hypocrisy for an elected official based on the workload for the town, based on, oh, the standard might be too high. There is no standard high enough for a public official. You guys control millions of dollars in our budget. You know, this is shameful, you know, that, that an Honor Code is receiving so much pushback. Thank you.
Just, I just want to say something about that. I normally don't, I really never speak-- Excuse me, I, now it's my opportunity to speak. You know, I really prefer not to speak when people say things, but since it's such an allegation, regardless of what Mr. Santorino's investigator, I think this took, what, at least a half a year, maybe eight months to investigate our staff and, and all these quote unquote allegations about a code enforcement complaint, which by the way, just for the record, was, was correct. So in other words, there was an issue with the building. But, and, and you can say what you want about me, I know you will because I'm an elected official, but in order to, for that to be true, that means that our manager, our town clerk as a code enforcement director, that means the code enforcement officer, all played a role. And to be honest, that is just not true. And I know that I've been on this council for years, and there's going to always be people saying things because that's what you do when you're elected. But, and, and, and listen, that report, those are words that are online, that's correct. But to infer that there is collusion by our staff in order to punish a resident for any reason, whether they agree with us or disagree with us or vehemently disagree with us, is just wrong. Out of all my years in the government, in all the cities and the county and the legislature I've had the pleasure of working, including the city of Opalaka, which I was fired for being the whistleblower of uncovering over a million dollars of real fraud, which I was last year on the front page of the Miami Herald for, I have to admit, the people that work at our town, Ron and Marlene and all those individuals are some of the finest people I've had the pleasure of working with, and we are really lucky to have them serving our community, and they are not bad people. And I take offense, and I've told Mr. Santorino on numerous occasions, that one sentence, that inference, that, that just because you can't prove it, that it makes a personal reference to that. The reality is it's not, was not substantiated, and there was no action taken by the commission, it was just an investigation. And that's the part, excuse me, you're out of order. And that being said, there was no investigation that went to the Ethics Commission, it was, you know, finished. I do have a comment about this because this is exactly what we're talking about. I don't think anyone here on this dais is against an Honor Code. I don't think anyone on this dais is against doing what's right for the interests of the residents. I mean, all of us work for free, we don't even get paid to do this. I think our concern, at least from what I can gather, is that we have concerns that this is going to be used as political weapon or be used as an opportunity for that gotcha moment. I think what would probably be something worthy of discussing is in lieu of having the Ethics Commission being the jurisdiction, we should bring everything out into the open. Unlike the, by the way, just so you know, the way the Ethics Commission works is when you make a complaint or make a reference, it is secret. So the only people that know are the individual that makes the complaint and the individual that is being accused of that action. And I can tell you for a fact, several years ago, for those of you who don't know, there was a resident that made an allegation. And it's ironic because they alleged that I made a sunshine violation for speaking at the county. And when you saw the video, if you remember, Joe, you were actually in the video, so you were actually in the audience when, when I was speaking. And of course, the person who made the allegation, first thing they did was call the Miami Herald because there's only two people that knew. In fact, actually, I didn't even know yet because you have a 30-day wait period before, before the person being alleged is even notified. So there's an article in the Miami Herald, and that's how I found out that they were looking at something. Of course, nothing ever came of it, but it doesn't seem like the way the laws and the books are today, that it gives a fair, a fair shake. I would like to see that everything be open in the sunshine, and when people make an allegation, that it comes before us as the council. And I think that perhaps is maybe even a better system than the way it is now. Because the way it is currently is when you make an allegation or, or some type of charge, it's a secret. And by the time you find out what happened, it's six months, a year, whatever, and by that time, it's, it's already done. I think that it should come before the council, and I would like to see staff revise it, section two, to impose that the jurisdiction would be the town council.
I'm sorry. If there's an allegation against one of us, isn't it a town council to be the arbiter? Or, that doesn't make any sense, I'm sorry. How could we consider a complaint against one of the seven?
No, in that, if something is substanti, if, if there's an allegation that it would be something that the council collectively would decide be referred for further investigation. In other words, we would not be the ones investigating it, but--
No, I don't, I don't want to be involved in investigating--
You know, Jordan--
Our thoughts should be in part--
I think what you're trying to get, right? Well, you know, what you failed to, to illustrate to the audience is the fact that the system, as it currently stands, actually worked because, you know, there was a, there was a complaint filed, that type of, that alleged type of activity, you know, and obviously no one is saying that you're guilty or, or not guilty or whatever, is covered under the current Ethics Code. And it, it didn't fall through the cracks. So, you know, I, you know, personally, I think, you know, the level of compliance that we need to meet at this point is sufficient. Okay? But in the, in the event that, you know, this council decides to pass, you know, this Honor Code, I would suggest that we remove the whereas, where it says, page 105, you know--
I'm sorry, which?
Yeah, page 105, where it says ordinance 1394, we're not passing an ordinance--
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
This is a resolution. If we, if we do pass it, I'm not sure where this is going, whether, you know, people are going to vote for it or not, but whereas government and those who serve in it at all levels have experienced a loss of public trust and respect. I, I, I think that's editorializing. I don't think that really tells me anything, and I don't think that's a true statement, in my opinion. Okay, so I think that should be, I think, you know, personally, if we're, if this council, if it's, if it's this council's desire to actually adopt something like this, I think we should have a workshop and really wordsmith, you know, this, this ordinance like this and make it more operational for a town of 6,000 people.
Well, you know, the resolution that's before us adopts, or says that we would be adopting Miami Dade County Implementing-- Implementing Order Number 7-7, establishing an Honor Code, and I haven't seen, I don't think, Miami Dade County Implementing Order 7-7, so I would like to see that. I mean, I'm not opposed to this at all, but I think we're, we're going to adopt something, we should have it in front of us as, as part of our package, and maybe it was here last month, I don't recall, when this was last before us.
Yeah, we don't have--
But, you know, but we're not adopting an ordinance per se, we're--
It's a resolution.
It's a resolution--
Oh.
You know what? Implementing a code. So I think we need to see 7-7 now that it's been adopted, but I don't know why that's not before. And my only other comment is, you know, you know, some people, some members may be against this, some may be before, but I think what we all do when any ordinance or resolution comes before us is discuss it, and when we have the, the privilege of having, you know, Mr. Santorino here or another official here, you know, people asked questions of Commissioner Hayman earlier, I think, you know, it's not a responsibility, but our, we have the ability to ask questions and learn about, you know, the resolution or the ordinance that we may be adopting, just because we ask questions about how it may be implemented, you know, no negative implication should be drawn from that because that's part of our responsibility as elected officials.
Well, I, I agree with what you said, I would like to actually see it. I thought that that's actually what I was looking at, but, but actually in retrospect, what we're referring to is in our packets. We have examples of ordinances from other municipalities, but ours is actually refers to an order that is actually not here. So in other words, we would be passing something that, that we actually don't have in front of us.
Okay, Mr. Santorino, what is Miami Dade County Implementing Order Number 7-7? Is it--
That is the Honor Code.
That is the Honor Code.
And I'm surprised you don't have it. You should have it.
We got it last time.
Okay, now, yeah, it may have been here the last time, I was just a little bit confused about that when I realized that we were--
We uploaded.
Wasn't it the page that was in last time? Remember, there was a page missing?
Yeah, there was--
Oh, yeah, yeah, it was missed.
It was a document we were waiting for and it didn't come into the package last time.
Yeah, we didn't have the whole thing.
Oh, wow.
All right. I'm, I'll move that we either defer this item until our next meeting where we have complete information, or I would support having a workshop on crafting an Ethics Code that actually applies to our municipality, not trying to use a cookie cutter Ethics Code or Code of Honor that relates to the county, which is a county of 2.5 million people and, you know, tens of thousands of employees.
Yeah, all right. I mean, I, I mean, I'd like to see the implementing order, so I, I don't mind deferring it for one more month. It's not going to make the biggest deal. I mean, what's one more month? You know, I mean, I, yeah, and as a point of privilege, we've always deferred when we don't have the actual implementing documentation from a resolution or ordinance. So, I mean, that, that's not unusual for us. So is everyone in favor of deferring so we can do that?
I agree, but I'd like to say one thing. It definitely is appropriate for us to delineate, to write down an Honor Code. Just imagine, you know, it's very simple. Many, many cities have experienced crimes that have been committed from within. And then there are many, many more, you know, in law enforcement, we had an expression, you know, we're getting 1%. You know, the Drug Enforcement Agency catches 1% of the illegal drug traffic. So the cases that you see that are solved, that's a fraction. And imagine how many there were more, there would be more, if you just reminded people that, you know, if you're counting widgets down in the basement of that city office and somebody sees a fellow employee putting some widgets in the pocket, you've got to tell. That's simply what it says. It just reinforces that. And there's nothing wrong with that. So however we have to spell this out to make everybody happy, it's necessary, it needs to be done, and I have absolutely no problem living by an Honor Code.
All right, so we're going to move on to item number four. And, Mr. Manager, number four.
Consideration approval of a resolution requested by Councilmember Reed to add an oath of civility to all oaths of office administered to elected and public officials.
Okay. Yeah, this is pretty simple, and it's been adopted in other cities. And I also recommend that we add this to the Oath of Office, and at our next meeting will be the organizational meeting. So whomever is sworn in, I think it would be nice if everybody else on the dais would also stand and take this oath for the first time going forward.
Let me ask, I have a question for, for our clerk. The oath is, is that, is that in the charter or--
Yes.
It's in the charter. So is this something that we can do? Or is that, because--
Yeah, this is just an additional--
It's just an additional, so it's--
You can't take away--
No, I, yeah, we can add.
Another piece of paper you can sign.
No problem. All right, so we have a motion, a second? Okay, and we have discussion. Mr.--
This is a reminder that the civility oath is--
Yes.
Right over there, by the microphone, it's been there for many years.
As, as Councilmember Yaffe once told--
Right, right. Former Mayor Glick proposed--
Yes, but I was properly scolded by you, so I--
All right, Mr. Maya.
Thank you, Victor Maya, 1155 103rd Street. I will respectfully remind Mr. Salver that our code is replete with adopting county procedures and policies. In fact, our, our, the county's procedures and policies with respect to bid appeals was used to deny the appeal of the tennis center contract, okay? And it was a very contentious issue. And Mr. Simon happily came in and said, hey, you don't meet the $25,000 threshold that the county looks at in order to consider appeals. So our code is replete with taking provisions, ordinances, practices and procedures from the county, from the city of Miami Beach, from the city of Miami, from all over the place. So that shouldn't really stop anything else. With respect to civility, I really think this is another no-brainer, but, you know, given what I've heard today, I don't know. Thank you.
All right, next we have Francis Newhart.
Again, I would like to thank Mr. Santorino for coming today. Thank you again. And for their good work, I mean, these, especially people who can't afford to hire attorneys and fight our town and our county, you know, people who are, who are not doing or are doing wrongdoing, this is the only people that they can go to. So an Honor Code of any kind to help the citizens would be a plus. I seriously think that this is wrong of you not to pass either one of these. And also, Mr. Isaac Salver, I want to remind you that we might be a small town of 6,000. The population of Bay Harbor isn't much larger, and they got the front page of the Miami Herald this Sunday in Neighbors, no, in the front page of the whole Miami Herald. So population doesn't make a difference for wrongdoing in a town. All I'm saying is that council, you can afford, Mr. Sherman, because the town pays for it. We don't. I mean, I can afford it, but there are people out there who can't. And unfortunately, I've seen them hurt many times because they don't know where to turn or what to do. So, Mr. Santorino, I really appreciate you being here tonight, and I hope people who watch us on the television understand that we are trying to make some kind of ethics in this town that seems to be limited at this time and questionable, and that's why it's being brought up tonight, especially before an election. And hopefully this will not happen again like it has with previous elections. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Also for the record, because it's been alluded to several times, our council, Mr. Simone and Mr. Sherman, although we do hire the attorneys, they, they are not our personal attorneys. They, they work for the town. There's a difference, it's not the same attorney-client privilege. We don't have privileged communication unless if there's litigation involvement. So whatever, when we discuss with them, it's still public record. It's not, it's not the same as us hiring a, a personal attorney. There's no more comment hearing? Is there any other comment from council? Because if not, then we can just--
I make a motion.
All right, a motion, a second? Yeah, so a motion, a second, all's in favor, aye?
Aye.
Anywhere else? No? Okay, passes unanimously. Number five.
Thank you for coming down. After not ever being here before, you may be here twice in a row.
Yeah, there you go.
Item five is consideration approval of a resolution requested by Councilmember Truposhi opposing any religious-based and nationally-based--
Truposhi opposing any religious-based and nationally-based registration of persons entering in the United States of America.
Okay, council member?
I think that this speaks for itself. I know in speaking with a number of the residents, because I am blessed to be out and about quite a bit, there have been a lot of questions that they've had about, you know, where the town stands, where we individually stand on some of the things that are going on nationally. And, you know, we have a very diverse population here. We have people that are green card holders. We have people that, you know, have become citizens over the years. And I think it's important that we, as a council, speak and say that we're not okay with any religious-based or nationality-based registration of persons in this country.
Okay, I believe Councilmember Salivar was the one that pulled this.
Yeah, I did. You know, I don't have a problem with this concept, really. I think there are actually registrations that are set up to assist, you know, aliens. I think the dream, the only way the government knows about Dreamers is through a registration. That's, that's my first point. So I think for us to make a blanket statement that we're against registrations of any kind regarding nationality or religion is a little haphazard. What I'm really concerned about regarding this resolution is that it actually names, I mean, it names our president, you know, supporter of Donald Trump, a Donald Trump supporter, Carl Higbee, and then it talks about the Japanese during World War II and other stuff like that. You know, this, to me, seems a little bit too editorial. And, you know, I'm not that comfortable, you know, putting, you know, associating my name with a resolution of this nature. So, I, you know, I understand what you're saying, I kind of, you know, support you morally, but I'm going to vote against it because I think it's a very loosely written type of resolution that I'm not comfortable with putting individuals' names and referring to Donald Trump supporters. You know, I think it's, you know, in a town that is, you know, we run our races on nonpartisan basis. And I think this is, you know, when I read this resolution, it's incredibly partisan to me. So, I'm going to vote against it.
Jordan, if I may also.
Yeah, please.
I agree to a large extent with Isaac. I agree with you completely in the basis for it and the reason for it and all the arguments for it. The pop culture references in the wording create a problem for me. I mean, the idea that we're quoting Trevor Noah and saying, because he says something, we should support, that doesn't seem appropriate for the community. We should be doing it for the basis of what intent is, not trying to refer back to The Daily Show.
Yeah.
So if this is reworded, I'll support it as it currently is written. It just seems, I mean, for lack of a better term, a little childish. I'd like to have.
Yeah, I'd like to reword it.
I agree.
So why don't we bring this back, but to reword it in a different way so that we can take out?
Exactly, and then that's important.
Now that you've gotten the idea of what is not.
And perhaps council can help you with some of the whereas clauses, so we can.
I think we helped you enough.
Thank you. All right, so we're going to, we're going to move on then. Oh, wait a second. Well, it's deferred.
But would you?
Mike?
Okay, very good. All right, so in six passes, we're going to move on to number seven.
Mayor? Can I ask you a favor? We have a...
Depends.
I have a resident in the audience that I had told him a week and a half or a while ago, that he had a complaint about, he's Sunpass account. And he said, when should I come show up? And I knew we had the public hearing, and I said, oh, he's coming around eight o'clock. He showed up at eight o'clock, but since we didn't have a public hearing, I had totally forgotten to, I didn't think to call him. He's here, his wife is here. I know he's, he's here. He must have walked out for a second. I don't know if Mrs. Azari would like to come up and speak for a minute?
You mean, you want to open, go back to public comment?
Yeah, he kind of, he's...
If, if, let's see, I want to... I'm, you're wrong. Okay, while we do this, we're going to move on with the agenda, and when he comes, unless, I'm assuming no one on the council objects, so we can, I just want to make sure. Okay, so just let him know, and then we're going to continue on, okay? All right, number seven.
Item seven, consideration approval of a contract award to CNI Construction in the amount of $13,977 for sanitary sewer lateral point repair at 9601 East Bay Harbor Drive. It was bid out, and the low bid was CI.
Great, can I have a motion?
I'll have it.
A second? All right, we have a public comment. Victor Maya.
Victor Maya, 1155 103rd Street. From reviewing the materials, it appears as though there were two laterals at that location, and one of them caved in. What is not clear is what was the, why that second lateral caved in? And so my question is, if it caved in as a result of work that was being done by the Grand Beach folks and their construction and all that, why aren't they paying to repair the lateral as opposed to us? If indeed it was something that was, you know, long-term standing and it was an issue, then I have no issue with it. But if it was, you know, the result of or related to in any way, shape, or form, construction right there, which, you know, seems like a reasonable assumption, but I could be wrong, then I think they should pay for it. Thank you.
All right. It's funny that you mention that, and I was thinking exactly the same thing.
The damage is on our side, and as it's in there, there's two laterals. It's unknown whether that lateral could have been collapsed a long time ago, but for them to hook up, we have to provide them a lateral to hook up to, into the main.
No, I get, I get.
So that report, there's no way, there's no way to determine it.
Have we scoped, have we ever scoped that? Did we ever give a colonoscopy to that lateral?
I'm not sure.
Because if it wasn't broken...
Randy says it was done a long time ago, and the lateral was not, it was unusable, and it just wasn't.
So it's been unusable for years?
Yes.
Okay.
We just didn't do anything about it because?
Because it wasn't abandoned. It was basically abandoned.
Okay, all right, so we have a motion, a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anywhere else? All right, we have number eight.
Wait, wait, the gentleman is back.
Okay, he's back, all right, come on down. And so, sat for three minutes.
How are you?
Name an address for the record.
My name is Guido from 9740 East Bellevue. I have a small, first question. If a resident has a problem, which city you should go? Bay Harbor, Bel Harbor, or Southside? A city, a resident of Bay Harbor, where should they go if he has a complaint?
It depends.
Hang on. Bay Harbor, good. Okay, I'm here in Bay Harbor. I had a complaint from Sumpice. My wife told me, go and settle up. So I came here, Bay Harbor, yeah? Okay, I give it to the director, so he told me, give it to this girl, whatever her name. She said, no problem, ignore them. The director overcharged people, immediately, and I take care of it. I came to my wife, I said, this is what she told me. So ignore it. The next day came by, I throw it away to the garbage. And all of a sudden, it piled up to 640 dollars. Said, no way, you got to come back. I came back, said, oh, you know what? The computer is not registered you. It's this, not registered me. I want to give you back the 275 dollars. I said, no, 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 don't give me the 275. I wanted to say the part like you promised me when I came the first day. And what happened since then? Look what happened with the 640 dollars since then. From 18 dollars jumped to 640. So, you here and I there, you tell me what I should do. Okay? So, don't see me here, see me there. And tell me what I do, either that or, like you said, Bay Harbor.
Well, first of all, I think that we need to talk to the person who actually registers you.
Who was in charge on this?
I'm a little, I'm a little, not uncomfortable, but discussing a private account, in essence, I'll discuss the business rules of Sunpass, okay? If in Sunpass, your account is not current, Sunpass will suspend your account. So when you go through the tolls, you will be billed as if you didn't have any Sunpass account. Even if you had an annual pass paid for in our town, it doesn't matter. It's suspended, and it will charge you every time. And bringing your, when you go to Sunpass to bring your account to present, Sunpass normally, and almost every time, will waive the upcharge of the toll by plate. So they will discount that, but you have to pay for the tolls. Over the course of time, you can be, you know, your account can be in compliance or it can be out of compliance. That can occur over years, in and out. Mr. Azari came in, we talked about it, because his charges are over, over $275, I offered to give him back the annual because clearly his account has been suspended for at least some of the time he started from here. When you sign up for, when you sign up for the annual, it's very clearly stated, it's outlined, it's highlighted, that if you don't have an active account or your account is not current, it will not work. And that's all I can, you know, that's all I can say. I would be happy to refund him the 275. I might have a check on my desk right now for that. I don't know, I don't feel it's right to go back three years, okay? Because there's a lot of other things that I, that affect his account that we'd be bearing on this. So I'd be happy to work with you some more, but I, there are some rules that I have.
So I should go by the bridge, park the car somewhere, walk over the bridge, come back, walk back, and go with my car? Is that what you mean?
No, no, no.
No, no, you can give me the 275, what does it mean? What does it mean to you?
Excuse me, excuse me.
I'm just refunding your pass.
Why don't we just, why don't you speak again to the manager and see if you can resolve it?
I did.
I'm asking you nicely if you could please try, and he's willing to work more with you, and see if maybe this can get resolved. I don't think it's a good venue in a public forum that, in front of everyone, to go into the personal nuances of your Sunpass.
No, I didn't, I didn't interact with it in the beginning with somebody else.
I know.
Yeah, but somebody else gave me the indication that ignore them, what does it mean to you?
What I'm asking you nicely is if you can please work, Mr. Watson, he's a good...
I already worked with him. You want to give me back the 275? What should I do with the 275? Give it back to him, park the car before the bridge, and walk over the bridge and come back?
I'm not saying that.
So what do you say?
I'm asking that we not discuss your personal matter in an open forum.
Is it personal matter or is it complaint? It's not personal matter. If somebody has come and you're telling the same thing, it's a personal matter? I'm a resident of Bay Harbor, and I have a complaint that the city itself, I gave the 275. I went across Sumpice, they told me, come and complain in Bay Harbor. Didn't tell me, oh, you have a complaint. If I came here, why didn't you tell me what to do? Oh, okay, so this is the situation?
All right, well, listen, just for the record, this was, what we did was made an exception and allowed you to speak during public comment. But again, public comment is not necessary to work out individual items, so that's...
So what do you suggest me to do?
I suggest that tomorrow morning you speak.
And then what is he going to tell me? He is at the front of me.
I can't speak for Mr. Watson, I'm just asking.
But I already talked to him. He, he's also not acceptable.
Well, I can tell you, I've spoken to Mr. Watson three times.
He's a nice guy, I know, but then what?
I've personally spoken to Mr. Watson about your issue three times. So I'm aware of it, I don't know if my...
So what should I give you, the solution? Not you, not you.
I will be happy to be with you tomorrow, you know, to resolve this, but...
You know, Ron, if I may.
Please, please.
Just the portion of your comments that related to the Sunpass and the Bay Pass relationship, can you just repeat that, just so we have it on the record, so everyone understands exactly what happened here? So I think, you know, it's kind of like a procedural issue that we need explained.
Sunpass operates under a certain amount of, certain business rules, which we approved, and it's in their business rules. So you can be anywhere in the state. If your, your account is not current, it will suspend your Sunpass. So wherever you go, you will be charged a higher rate. It will be like you were driving around without a Sunpass, and it will be toll by plate.
Okay, then, and then, and you're saying that he...
That happened. That happened a few times over the last couple of years.
So they're separate? In other words, you can buy a Sunpass, have a, have a Bay Pass connected to it?
Don't even say Bay Pass. Because we don't say that anymore.
Sorry, sorry.
It's the annual pass.
Annual pass, you can pay for an annual pass, but that does not cover you for the rest of the...
In other words, in other words...
It doesn't cover your Bay Harbor tolls if you're, if there's an issue with your Sunpass account.
No, but let's say, but let's say there's...
Here's, I know exactly what you're going to ask me. The 275, if you never drove out of Bay Harbor Islands, you would never have to worry about it. But say you drove off of Bay Harbor Islands, and you went down the Gratney, and you never paid, when you got your thing in the mail, or your, however you load your Sunpass, if you didn't pay it, it suspends your Sunpass account. So when you come through Bay Harbor Islands, it's not, it's like you don't have a Sunpass.
No, I understand.
So they will not read it, and it charges you $1.50.
So is the concept that, or the misconception of people would be that when they get their annual pass, they assume that on top of that, it's connected also, that it's...
Yes.
It's not Bay. I think it's, it's an assumption that when we accept their 275 or whatever the new annual pass is, that they have a valid Sunpass account. Do we, do we cross-reference that?
Absolutely. And not only that, you have to have, in your, when you sign your annual, your, when you buy your pass, I don't have, I don't have it with me now, but it is in several locations, very high, it's highlighted in yellow, and you've all seen it, it's, it's very specific. If you don't have your, if your account is not current or it's not enforced, you will not, the pass won't work. So that's, that's why...
But that's not my question. My question is, are there people who buy the annual pass, and they do not recognize or understand that that is only for, and that it doesn't cover them if they go on the turnpike or if they go because you need to put your credit card out?
You can't, you can't buy a pass.
No, but I'm saying...
No, no, to answer your question, and I know Bridget's probably dying to say this, she checks, we have a waiting period to make sure that your account is active, you verify it. It doesn't mean like the next day or the day after you get your annual, you could go out of compliance. We can't, we don't go back and check people. The question, you know, the answer is, we don't go back and check to see if you maintain an account that's current.
All right, so... Right, right, continually, but, but on day one, on October 1st or September 30th or September...
Whenever they sign up now.
Whenever they sign up.
Yes.
At that point in history, they have had, they have a valid Sunpass account that we can activate our Bay Pass with, and we take their 275 or whatever.
Yes, because in the very beginning, a lot of, a lot of, a lot of people did come in, a lot of people came in, and more elderly people, and they didn't realize, they said, go out and get a Sunpass, they'd walk in with one, you'd tell them what they had to do, and, you know, they didn't understand that they had to do their, they had to register. All those, all those accounts, that really never happens anymore, because we spend time with them, and everybody gets the 30-second speech from Bridget, you know, don't do this, make sure they understand. And then they sign the documents that they've been advised, and they understand this. So I'm not, I'm not saying that everybody walks out the door. I mean, I, they say, they say they understand.
Ron.
But this is really a very, this is more, this is an unusual case, to be honest with you.
Ron, I mean, I'm sure you can deal with this tomorrow morning. However, in the meantime, is there any way you can just make sure that no further damage comes to him? In other words, I'd like the gentleman to make sure that, in other words, while you're working on that pass, if you have to create a new pass and activate it as an annual, I just don't want him getting more bills before we fix the other.
I don't think you're allowed to.
Let's get rid of that issue first.
You're not allowed.
You're not allowed. They will not allow you to open up, because you have to use the same plate. It's the car.
Okay, so you can't...
You can't, you can't, you know what, believe me, there's, I don't know, that's...
So, it means, it's not clear, whatever you discussed, all of you, it's not clear, and I'm the victim. What do you mean?
I, I would just ask you, if you can speak to Mr. Watson, if still it's not resolved, we can...
I will try to work something out with you, sir, in the morning. I'm happy to try.
Okay, so I had the beep, what should I do?
Please speak to Mr. Watson.
I will try to work something out with you.
Okay.
Thank you.
But what you offer me, I'm not accepting.
All right, we're starting from there.
No, I'm staying in front of everybody.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, Mr. Watson, number eight.
Okay, number eight. Consideration approval to utilize the Miami Parking Authority contract we're parking on for the purchase of six parking meter stations in the amount of $34,950 plus $1,800 for installation for proposed locations on Block 11, Alley 3, 97th Street Lot 1 and 95th Street Parking Lot.
All right, I need a motion in a second.
I'll move it.
First, we need to have a motion, the second before...
I'll second it.
Yeah, we have a motion in a second, that's wrong. Yeah, please, Bob.
Jesse, this is a different type of system than the ones on 96th Street. On 96th, this is where you have to punch in your license plate?
Yes, this is the ones you have to punch in your license plate. The reason I did that is that, especially, and I keep thinking of 95th Street Lot or even the Green Lot, the way it is set up on the Kane Concourse, there's only like a distance of four or five yards you have to walk back to to put your ticket on the dashboard.
Right, okay.
Also, since it's parallel, as, you know, since it's parallel parking spaces, as Ray's driving by, it's a little more difficult to see the license plates, since these are surface lots, we're using, I'm proposing using the pay-by-plate.
All right, let me ask you, actually, let me ask you one more thing. How much more expensive would it have been to also have the ones that accepted bills for the same thing?
I'm trying to wean ourselves off of accepting bills. Right now, there are not many bills are being, are used in the current meters that we have, but they pose a lot of problems, they get jammed all the time, constantly replacing them, and...
So you evaluated, you decided not to?
Yes, I'm moving away from cash, and it still accepts coins, we do have pay-by-phone at these locations, so...
And to be clear, it's the same system as on 96th Street, we're just expanding it?
Yes, that's correct.
All right, so I want to make sure for everybody who's listening, we're talking about expanding the same system, it's the same app on your phone the whole night.
I have a question. I understand that this is a piggyback off the Miami contract, so you're assuming that, you know, you're getting the best price. Why didn't we just bid this out, just to see what the other prices would be?
Well, because I've been wanting to go with, since we already have Park Count, I wanted to use Park Count as well, and they even told me, "You can go out to bid, but your bid is not going to be as good as what we gave Miami Parking Authority. Your warranty is not going to be as good, and your, there's another fee in there that they would charge us."
Yeah, I mean, that might have been the conclusion, but I think if it's over, what, $10,000, we're supposed to get three estimates?
Actually, no, not necessarily, because our town council says we can piggyback, so...
We're at 45% or so.
It's in the procurement order?
Okay, so, all right, so then you're within the ordinance, but we don't really have an idea what the other bids would have been?
I don't know, because it's just one of those that Park Count is, they have a local distributor that they, that we would have gotten a price from. There's not like three companies that sell Park Count, you know what I'm saying? They have a local distributor, I think they have another one from Northern Florida.
Okay, thanks.
Kelly, I would say, I would agree with you, except for the fact that it came in at less than a half, well less than a half of what we budgeted, so...
Yeah, but how do we budget for that? Where do we get that number?
I think from previous purchases.
Yeah, from when I first...
From the same company?
Yes, no, from, yeah, from, this goes back to when we bought our first Park Counts back in, like 10 years ago.
On Kane Concourse?
Yes, that's correct.
Those are the first ones we bought?
The first ones, and I replaced those after 10 years.
Yeah, but I, it'd be very hard, you know, I mean, Miami Parker Authority, you know how many meters they buy? I mean, they buy a lot.
They're taking advantage of the purchasing power, so...
No, but they have better buying power, so, I mean, anyway.
But it is within our town ordinance.
Of course it is. All right, so there's a motion in a second, we have discussion. Francis Newhood.
Francis Newhood, 1060 Kane Concourse. Before I begin, I noticed that you put together these parking lots, and you're not, on our slum map, only two of these parking lots are in the commercial district. And the one on 97th Street, the municipal lot, the brown lot, is not. And what I'm trying to say is, in our commercial property, we have 400 business tax receipts or more that have been given out this year. We've also, the town with TDRs and stuff for the Monarch, gave out 44 parking spaces off the town lots privately, and they have 88 really, because it's a hotel. And also 9601 East Bay Harbor Drive with the TDRs, you gave them 21 off-street parking spaces. That equals 42 off-street parking spaces, because it's a hotel. How many more parking spaces are you going to give for free, including the church, which has 60,000 square feet of no parking? And I'm just saying that the commercial district is very limited, so I think we should come to the conclusion, there is no more parking available in the parking trust. So let's not start giving away things that we don't have. Also, this school is starting to, they expanded, or they're going to expand, they have a lot more teachers using the parking lot, even though our inter-local agreement is no longer an inter-local agreement with 60, they must have over 100 parking spaces in there that they use every day. So you're really choking our business district, and it shows with the businesses on the Kane Concourse. They don't have parking anymore. But more importantly is, I think for over 30 years, I have been asking Jaycee for lighting for the parking lot on 95th Street, and it's a mess.
Thank you very much for your comment, Francis Newhood.
And I wish you would correct that before you put the parking meters.
Thank you. All right, so we have a motion in a second, barring any further discussion, we have a poll.
Counselor Fuller?
Four.
Counselor Reed?
Four.
Counselor Sabra?
Four.
Counselor Chicosi?
Four.
Counselor Yasi?
Four.
Vice Mayor Rutter?
Four.
Mayor Lando?
Four.
All right, number nine.
Consideration approval of award of contract for solid waste and recycling services to World Waste Recycling in accordance with memorandum supporting documents.
Okay, have a motion in a second. A motion and a second, all right, Ron?
Actually, this was bid out, we had three bidders. We had a review of all the submissions, the three companies were all capable of doing the work, they were rated on several areas, pricing being one of them, and, you know, responsibility or responsiveness to what we requested, they all responded back in all those areas. The lowest-priced one was World Waste, we went out and inspected their facilities, the company officers met us there, took us around, I had met, we knew them from before Waste Management, brought them out and brought out their contract actually, so we knew the area, their facilities are the same, their personnel is pretty much the same, and...
So basically, it's the...
It's a substantial...
It's the waste management company we had before...
Waste Management, follow me up.
Right, until they, I mean...
Till they merged into...
Till they merged in 2009, that's who we were using previously, and if we were to change, that means the garbage, we would start from scratch, right? Garbage cans.
Yeah, they come out and they replace, well, in the same time they go, those are the ones we're managing, we won't be replacing those, those are the ones that the town has. They'll come in and take the ones that say Waste Management out and replace it with the ones that say World.
They have serviced our route for most of the people in their company, were there at that time, are still there, familiar with our town and what we request.
Agreements for when there's hurricanes and...
It's in the contract.
It's in the contract, but in addition to, we do have other contractors for hurricane debris removal.
No, prior.
Prior to hurricane, yes.
And we have a letter from a company complaining about the process, and I think that was in the original packet, that's online, this was sent to us, and then we got a paper copy, so maybe the town attorney wants to speak to this letter from the law offices of Grant Smith, who represent Progressive. They have listed several complaints about the process, can you go over that with us, please, for the record?
Well, Mr. Smith is here and has asked to speak during public comment, perhaps he can.
Okay.
Certainly, we have our own opinion with regard to the letter, and we'll be happy to answer or respond to that thereafter. It's also not a bid protest either, it's his concerns with regard to the process and the scoring.
All right, hearing no other discussion for now, we're going to go to public comment, Grant Smith. There you go. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. My name is Grant Smith with Waste Connections of Florida, one of the proposers to your procurement.
Just announce your address just...
Sorry, sir. 2860 St. Louis 84, Fort Lauderdale, Florida.
Before you proceed, in case, you know, I for one would like to hear what he has to say beyond two minutes, if it takes beyond two minutes, so in this case...
I was ready for three, and then I saw it was two, and so I was trying to condense it for the last hour, so...
No, this is fine.
Thank you very much, I don't have much. Everything that I said in my letter, I firmly believe. My client asked me to come tonight because they feel strongly about the process. They believe, as do I, I'm an idealist. I had the same conversation with the city of Opa-locka back in 2013, so I know from what you speak. There's a principle here, and the principle is that you need to be able to rely on good information, the residents need to be able to rely on good information, and your proposers need to be able to rely that the process is going to be fair and equitable. So here are my concerns in there outlined in my letter, but perhaps I can make, you know, a sense of some of them, they're a little complicated. First, on the math issue, so when you look at pricing, normally, pricing is evaluated, and if you say that there's 30 points available for the lowest price, then everybody who gets a price, points assigned, would be some proportion of 30. You don't just make it up, math is not subjective, math is objective. And so if you have 30 points available, and let's say somebody bids $100, and then the next bidder is $110, what you would do is take 100, divide it by 110, multiply it by the number of available points, and that's what your second-place person would get. You don't leave it to the whim of the evaluators to say, "I think that's too expensive, I've got to give you lower points." It doesn't work that way for something that's objective. So here, the evaluators, curiously enough, there were, I think there were four, three of them scored identically, 30, 20, and 10, but then there was one evaluator that scored like 30, 25, and 20, which just goes to prove my point and exacerbate my point, that it should be objective, you can't have a subjective standard to pricing. That's my first complaint. So the points were scored just randomly, not with any kind of, any, you know, it was totally arbitrary. Second, so there was a fault in your scoring, in your pricing sheet, and the pricing sheet did not ask, in the 19 commercial units that get three-time-a-week service, what the size of the container was, and you can see that in our pricing sheets, in my letter, it's the, I think it's the last page of my letter, and it just says 19, and then they asked for us to fill in a price, and then extend the pricing out. So what happened is, because the town didn't specify what size container it was, we were left to make it up on our own. So normally, I advise my clients, do not put something in the pricing sheet that shouldn't be there, because it's, you shouldn't do that, but we had to, there was no other way to do it. So we put an asterisk, and then explained. I explained, I wrote it, and it said that our price is based on a two-yard dumpster going three times a week. That way, you kind of have some understanding of what our pricing is, it was 250-some-odd dollars. Well, curiously, after the bid opening, and we saw everybody else's pricing, we saw Waste Management's, Waste Management did the same thing, they told you it was a 96-gallon cart, you knew exactly what they were pricing. World Waste didn't tell you what they were pricing, they just put a price in. I have a problem with that, because you don't know, so if one of those businesses needs a six-yard container or a two-yard container, presumably, their price is $55, but they don't tell you. So right now, you're going to award a contract to a company where if somebody needs a different size from what they imaginarily quoted you, they're going to have to live up to the $55 price, even if somebody needs an eight-yard container, because you didn't ask for it by the yard, you asked for it by the container. So now, when the committee took the pricing and added up the price to come up with the total price of all the competitors, well, they took Waste Management's 96-gallon, and they multiplied it by the number and assigned them a dollar figure. They took ours, multiplied it by the number, and assigned us a dollar figure, they took World Waste, multiplied by the number and assigned a number. Well, here's the problem, the problem is, we bid a two-yard container, Waste Management bid a 96-gallon container, and so our price was $254, and the $254 times 19 is obviously more than Waste Management's 19 times $110 or whatever their price was. And low and behold, you're adding apples and carrots, you can't add these two things and come up with a logical answer, because we all bid different things. Okay, so I have a problem with the basic math, but I'm here to tell you and be honest with you, the math doesn't help me, okay? Because I know what the per-yard waste, per-yard price waste charge was, I know what the per-yard price that I charged was, and I know, I think, because they didn't clarify it, and you shouldn't allow them to clarify things after a bid, but I think I know what they did in their per-yard price, it appears to be less, but more importantly, is that you can't figure it out from the math that the committee used. And so also, by the way, apportioning the points, because we reverse engineered this whole thing, I lose that too, it doesn't help me, that's why it wasn't a protest. But I felt strongly enough that I had to be here to explain to you the problems. And so let me tell you the rest of the issues, which are much less complicated. One, there was a section on the pricing sheet that asked for commercial pricing, presumably for your restaurants, that goes every day, but we filled in pricing, but the committee completely ignored it, it didn't get put into the pricing matrix, it didn't get put into any of the calculations, and you can see that plainly on the scoring sheets, completely ignored. Why ask for pricing if you're going to ignore it? Third, the person who is exempt under your cone of silence, which is your assistant town manager, was on the evaluation committee, that's highly irregular, you normally don't have the person who's exempt from the cone of silence sitting on your evaluation committee. I know this because I practice this kind of law all over the place, never happens, you don't have the exempt person on the evaluation committee. Next point, your manager, the manager was used as a reference by World Waste, he also sat on the evaluation committee, slightly irregular. I understand why World Waste used the town as a reference, because it is one of the only places that they've had municipal service. The residential services that, and now this goes to my last point. My last point is that if you look at the scoring, the scoring is very uniform with experience and the ability to perform and all of those things. And so you have Waste Management, $15 billion a year in revenue, our company, $4 billion a year in revenue, and you have World Waste, which had $8.7 million of revenue last year. So I don't understand, this is subjective, so I do understand how the number can happen, I don't understand how it happened. How you can, and the people in the evaluation committee can really take that and look at the numbers and say that these companies are all similarly situated to be able to do the work, it doesn't make intuitive sense to me. For example, in their financials, I reviewed the bids today, the bid packages that were submitted, I reviewed them today. I believe, Councilmember, you're an accountant, so ideally, you would tell your clients that your total current assets should always exceed your total current liabilities.
You're installed...
It's basic accounting, so on the sheets that World provided you with the bid, it's in the backup, they have $1.2 million of total assets and $2.9 million of total current liabilities. Astonishing to me that they would get the same ranking as us and Waste Management. And just by way of example, Waste Connections, the company that I represent, last year, or projected for 2017, had $4.45 billion in revenue, current assets of $832 million and current liabilities of $692 million, and projected net income of $247 million. Worlds apart, and yet the same scores. So those things don't make intuitive sense to me, my client wanted me to bring those concerns to you, thank you very much for listening.
Thank you very much.
If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Does anyone have any questions?
I was just going to ask, because I, you know, this is something I do know a lot about, actually, and I just, because you said that your clients bid and didn't put specific numbers with the asterisk or whatnot, but, I mean, I'm looking here, did you read this, the agenda?
I did.
Okay, so you know on page two, well, actually, on page one, they go over the analysis, we have 2,668 multifamily units, 290 single-family... Two-hundred-and-ninety single-family, nineteen commercial units, and daily accounts, which are restaurants, which require daily pickup, eleven.
Yes, sir.
And if you look on page two, it's itemized here for all of us to look at. On page two on the top, it says what every single company bid in each specific category. So you're saying that your client didn't do it right, but...
No, 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 no. I'm saying my client did it right.
Oh, okay.
Totally, no, you're, we have that flipped. My client did it exactly right. So if you look at the right-hand column, the one that says "commercial," okay?
Yes.
Waste Management, hundred-and-sixteen times nineteen units.
Right.
Okay. Ours, two-hundred-and-fifty-nine-point-eighty times nineteen units, and World Waste, fifty-five dollars times nineteen units. Makes perfect sense, except when you actually go to the pricing sheets that were submitted. Okay, so it's in the backup of my letter. I provided two copies. All we had was a picture.
We have, we have those same things.
You have the actual, no, no, no. The pricing sheets from the bid. I don't believe you have that in your backup.
Oh, you have the pricing sheets, okay.
Yeah, it's a photograph. Okay. So if you look at the one on top, Waste Management, you'll see they bid nineteen, but you see in the parentheses, it says ninety-six-gallon carts.
Right.
Times a hundred-and-sixteen, okay?
Right.
Okay. Then you take World Waste down below, commercial, nineteen times fifty-five, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. But then you turn the page, turn to the next page of my letter.
Okay. Well, that, well, no, it's...
Yeah, that one. That's my, that's my pricing sheet.
Okay.
And you see it says nineteen times two-fifty-nine-eighty equals that price, but you see the asterisk. So, and you see my thing here. Because this pricing sheet was limited in what could be quoted, and each customer has a different size and frequency needs, the price quoted by Waste Connections is based on what the majority of customers in the town currently receive, which is a two-yard dumpster three times a week. If there are customers with other size or frequency needs, it will be charged at the same per-yard race as the commercial price quoted above. Now, that was done because of this deficiency in the pricing sheet. There is no way you could make heads or tails out of what World Waste bid, because they didn't clarify it. But Waste Management, the world's largest company, my company, the world's third-largest company, saw that there was this deficiency and felt the need to clarify. One participant didn't clarify. And so, but what I'm saying, sir, is that you can't take those numbers and add them together. You have to normalize them. So if you took mine and converted it to a ninety-six-gallon, I'm gonna get really wonky, but a ninety-six-gallon cart is a half a yard, generally speaking, four-point-four-five of the yard, quarter of the yard. A two-yard dumpster, which is what we quoted, is a two-yard dumpster. We don't know what they quoted. So you don't know what their per-yard price is. I can tell you that my per-yard price was ten dollars a yard, because you can reverse-engineer that number. Waste Management was somewhere a little bit north of that number, of my number, and I don't know how to reverse-engineer theirs, because they don't tell you what they quoted. But presumably, if any one of those nineteen businesses, I'm telling you this, if any one of those nineteen businesses asked for an eight-yard dumpster, under this bid scenario, World Waste has to provide them an eight-yard dumpster for fifty-five dollars, because that's what they put in. You can't add the number. You have to normalize them to make any sense out of them. But that's not what the evaluation committee did. They just did the straight math.
You don't have anyone that has a eight-yard, what's, or, J.C., what's...
Most of them use ninety-six.
They're all ninety-six, right, aren't they?
Not all of them. Not all of them, I mean, there's, most of them use the ninety-six-gallon containers. The bigger buildings, like eleven-eleven building, that one uses, well, they have a two-yarder in there.
They have a two-yard?
Yeah. Yeah, I think it's a...
Two-yards or so.
They've been on...
I know, but the restaurant going into the hotel might be different.
I used to have a two-yard for my business.
Maybe different, but it depends. I mean, those don't even have garbage containers in there yet.
I have a question for Mr. Moore.
Yeah.
Mr. Grant.
Grant Smith.
I'm sorry, Mr. Smith. You have two last names.
I do.
Mr. Smith mentioned earlier something that kind of troubles me a bit, and he alluded to the possibility that our review committee is composed illegally, or...
I didn't say that.
Or contrary to the ethics code, or the sunshine law, or something.
No.
The norm.
Well, you know, we, well, the cone of silence is found in where? That's fine in the sunshine...
He said, no, he said, that's county code, the cone of silence, that means whenever there's a bid, there's a...
No, no, I know what the cone of silence means.
Chill out too early.
He was, he was, I mean, he...
Chill out too early. Mr. Smith indicated that I was exempt from it. I never considered myself exempt from it. I complied, I followed the cone of silence. I answered to the RFI's during their RFI process.
He was the first to listen to the RFI.
And I will also say this, the pricing sheet during the RFI process, my original pricing sheet was a little different during the RFI process. His client gave me the pricing, you know, they said, he goes, I would suggest that you use this pricing sheet. Where I reviewed it with Alan, we're like, you know what, it does make a lot more sense. So I used the exact same pricing sheet that, you know, across the board, for everybody, that your client suggested that we use during the RFI question-and-answer process. But anyway, Frank can answer.
I would say that you're not, I...
Is there a chance of Frank, or a chance for Frank to answer the question?
Yeah, I, look, I've had the pleasure of working with Grant Smith on a number of projects through the years, in Homestead, Bell Harbor, this one as well. And he's a fine attorney, and does a great job for his clients. This does not rise to a bid protest, he'll be the first one to tell you that. There is no impropriety. You know, usually in larger municipalities, where you have a larger staff, it may be done a little bit differently. Here, and kind of the reason that you raised for the ethics matter, you have a very small staff who handles these kind of things, and therefore, that's not inappropriate as a matter of law. Every municipality is different, and smaller municipalities, folks sometimes have to wear two hats. But there's nothing illegal about that, and there's no, that would not, on its face as a matter of law, reverse any decision or be a foundation for a successful bid protest, in my opinion.
Yeah, I disagree. Yeah.
I'd like to just, I'd like to make one comment. I know Mr. Smith has said several times that, you know, we just all came up with the same numbers, and that we all must have sat there and said, oh, what did you put in? And that's kind of the inference I took from it. Maybe that's not what you meant. We all reviewed our packages, and we came to that meeting, already we filled out sheets. Sorry, some of them came out very similar, but it was actually a comment during our deliberation that, you know, great minds think alike. This is, this is an important contract for the town. That's why the people who did this review, did this review. And you were, your company was welcome, anybody was welcome to come and sit on that review.
I...
And that, it was advertised, so to either come, kind of, I take it a little bit that you didn't come, and now you're gonna sit and say how we arrived at the numbers.
Nobody came, because advertising, it doesn't work. If you have three bidders, you should tell those folks that you're having the meeting. You just don't have the meeting. You put it on your calendar. We're not checking your calendars every day to see what meetings are posted. I understand you advertised. I get it, believe me. But the fact that nobody came who was part of the process is indicative of the fact that you should just let the participants kind of know you're having a meeting. So, anyway, thank you.
Well, thank you for your...
Thank you.
All right. I would note that if you take staff's recommendation, it actually would show a decrease in cost to taxpayers, which is interesting, because rarely do you get to say that after years and years of using the same service, we're going down in price. It's kind of, it's almost a new one. Yeah, so we have a comment?
The folks from World Waste are here, so...
No, I know.
What did you just say? J.C., I didn't hear you.
The World Waste, they're here. Mr. Maya, do you want, you guys wanna speak?
I don't think so.
Oh, I didn't see the, they didn't, they didn't have agenda items, I didn't know. Okay, okay. All right, well, come on now. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Good evening. My name is Michael Adams. I'm one of the owners of World Waste Services. The two other owners are behind me. The president of the company is Martha Sarosa and Robert Sarosa. Just to repute some of the acquisitions that were made, we've serviced this town probably four times under this contract. We know this town. We know how it works. We know the culture in this town. We know when there's a storm coming. We know how to handle that. We've always had a good relationship with the town, worked with the manager's office many, over many years, and we know how to price this town. So when they say, you know, pricing like that, Waste Connections were ten-billion dollars, and Waste Management's fourteen-billion dollars. We're locally owned and operated. We don't have a corporate headquarters in Houston, Texas. We don't have to pay dividends, because we're privately held. And if, you know, if that's a problem, and we've always participated really as a community partner with you in the past. I know all about the picnic. We always did that. And for them, and I'm just gonna take some exception to what they said, they've only been in this market for a year, Waste Connections. So how can they say that we're not qualified when we've done this contract three or four times? So having said that, our vice president of municipal marketing, Eileen Damas, I'd like to say a few words. But we know this community very well. They don't.
Thank you again. My name is Eileen Damas, 2332 Southwest 19th Street. Our company is World Waste Recycling. We're located about some miles away from here. I would like to say that we might be small. We're locally owned, we're locally headquartered. We don't, you know, is it bigger, do you go to, it just doesn't make any sense, just because of a billion dollars, that you're better than somebody else. We have brand-new equipment. The both manager and assistant manager went to see it. We have done this contract before. We're very aware of it, we're ready for it. We priced correctly. We priced actually almost, a little bit more than we did the last time we priced it, and we were very good with that contract. And we have brand-new equipment coming over soon as we get the okay, hopefully. So we would like for you to consider, just because we're not a billion-dollar company, we are locally owned, we're locally headquartered, and we belong in this city, and we've known this town. So we appreciate your consideration. Do you have any questions for us?
I do have a question. I mean, again, Mr. Smith referred to your financial position. We didn't get to share that information. Do you guys have the financial statement?
It was all part of the bid package, Alan.
Can I say something?
Absolutely. You're the CFO.
While it is entirely possible that I made a mistake and missed something that Mr. Smith pointed out, I did go through the financials, and I did the calculation he described. When I was in school, we called that a quick ratio, and I calculated that, and I didn't, I didn't see what he said, but I will be happy to review the, I actually wrote the quick ratio either in the books that I had, or possibly on the evaluation sheet that I used. And I didn't see the problem.
But I don't think it was the quick ratio that he was talking about. Did he say...
Current liabilities?
No, I think it's a total liabilities and total, total, oh, current assets versus current liabilities, okay. You're right, maybe I misunderstood. I misunderstood. So there's net, so there's net worth in the company, right? There's net equity?
If I can just elaborate, we have affiliate companies, and our main company is World Waste. So we operate a recycling facility, we're building another one. So we were using the mothership, basically, you know, to help us, you know, develop those.
On the right hand.
Yeah, so those are, and they're certified. We, you know, there's nothing to be hidden there. And so I think, you know, that kind of came a little apparent. We're running on a good run rate. We service Miami Airport. We service one of the largest contracts in the country, Miami-Dade County. They, two-hundred-and-thirty-five-thousand homes, and Miami Airport, Broward County schools.
I need to, something that Grant mentioned. We, Atalanta Harbor Ground was not our only municipal waste contract. We had Village of Portail at one time. We had Village of Virginia Gardens, and we've had, we've done a lot of, city for a lot of those, remember?
Naples?
We did Naples, too. So we've had municipal experience, and we are aware of what the needs of the town is. And we know that we have to do side-door service. We know that recycling gets picked up twice a week. We understand this, and so we're ready for it, and I just hope you consider us.
Excellent, okay.
What I'm thinking is that there's just enough of a doubt right here, that I'd like to ask for this process to be redone. Not that you all did anything wrong, just that there's a little bit of a perception of impropriety. The attorney said there may not have been, but, you know, from the first thing, the math, that really jumped out at me, that it doesn't seem like, I'm not sure of the mathematical term, but it doesn't seem like the dollars were prorated into points that would have been a little more accurate. And this whole issue about the container size, and maybe, you know, the committee should have someone, at least one person from outside, and leave one person with the cone of silence. I just see a lot of things here that although are passable, it just, it leaves a bad taste, and I'd like to see it redone.
Tell me, if I can just say something. One thing that I actually, that I find that I like in the contract, obviously, is the six-month evaluation period.
Right.
We have that six months. If we find a problem with the pricing, that they weren't providing the size containers that are necessary, or there's any other problem, the contract's over, and we go up in the bid for everybody else again. With that six-month window, I say we take the price.
Yeah.
I agree with that also. I thought, you know, I talked to J.C. about that one day, and also looked at the, you know, the terms here. I mean, that's important to be able, if they, if you can't provide the service that you say you can provide, that the town can terminate the contract. And, you know, I... I think that's something to look at, and also, you know, I mean, I, I mean, there's a huge differential in the, you know, in price.
Right, and as I was just gonna mention, I think even if you reconsider, at any rate, the commercial component versus the residential component, and, you know, plug and play that, there's no way it's gonna, it's gonna make up the difference of thirty-five-thousand dollars per month from what you just...
One thing I... Let me ask one thing, though, actually. Let me ask one thing, because I, I mean, maybe I missed it. I read through the contract, but, you know, it's some big contract. Some emergent assignments, again. We obviously had the one issue with last time assignment. It went to Waste Management afterwards, they provided a service, and quite honestly, you guys were good when you were here, and Waste Management's been fine when they were here. My question will become, what happens if there's a second assignment later on?
Well, it comes to you.
Okay, okay. What I'm saying, yeah. Back again, I just wanna make sure that I was there on the...
You have the right to refuse the assignment.
Because the only issue is, I mean, if they assign it this time, you know, for whatever reason, you decide you can sell, you make money, whatever, I have no problem against that. If, we just wanna make sure we're happy with the company you guys are assigning it to. And that's all, that's the only issue.
You have the right to refuse the assignment.
Right, we had that last time, it's the same. And I, just say for the record, I mean, you know, when it comes to solid waste, I mean, this is something I actually do know. I actually have sat on committees before professionally as administrator, and I've actually been in charge of, you know, an actual bid. I mean, in fact, I've had J.C.'s position, you know, about this. I mean, the point is that I don't, I don't see anything wrong with it. I mean, I don't see anything wrong with what J.C. did. I spoke to Councilor about it already. I don't see anything improper. And to be honest, I don't, I would seriously question what type of position we'd be if we put this off, and potentially, our residents would actually have to pay more, because everyone would get another bite at the apple, knowing what the costs are. I mean, I don't see how the cost would go down if they all got another bite at the apple. We're actually gonna be decreasing our cost for services. So I would like to, you know...
At the end of the day, we got three bids.
Of course.
From three very qualified contractors. The prices came in, and we're recommending the lowest responsible bidder. That's plain and simple, and it's not even close.
Can I ask, I mean, I... I mean, you were here last time when we contracted with you guys, and then you flipped the contract, so to speak. What were the circumstances surrounding that episode?
Well, if I can comment on that, consolidation, whether it's the airline...
Well, I remember her. I don't remember you.
I apologize for that.
I spoke the first time.
Consolidation is inevitable in every industry. U.S. Air, American Airlines, Comcast, Infinity, you know, and all that. So as I sit here today, we have no offers on the table. We're not looking to sell. But, you know, things happen. I mean, I don't think that would preclude, you know...
But we get the same price. We would get the same rate.
It's assignable at the same price.
I think the fact that we have six months, you know, and also it comes back to us and we can decide, puts a lot, you know, it's a trial period. It's like, we're just dating right now.
Recording, recording.
Let's go to public comment, and we'll get this. Victor Maya.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for...
Victor Maya, 1155 103rd Street. Two points. I think the issues with the bid process, I think those are all legitimate issues. And I think they're symptomatic, really, of a problem that we really don't regularly bid out things. And so then when we finally do bid out stuff, you know, it's just has loads of mistakes. And so I hope that we learn from this and clean up the process so that it is a clean process, it is a fair process. And, boy, common sense, hey, y'all made a bid, we're having a meeting, come here. Oh, no, no, we posted it on some obscure web page or some, you know, obscure newspaper or whatever. You know, call them up and tell them to come to the meeting. My other issue was the one with the signability. I keep hearing about, you know, all this great work, you know, that this company has done for the town, but they haven't been doing the work for the town for the last few years. And so I have... It just seems a little bit fishy to me. You know, something just doesn't seem right, you know, with this whole issue that, you know, Waste Management, which has been doing our work, comes in, you know, at so high, these guys come in so low, then, you know, you're going to, you know, basically, you know, sell the contract back to them in some way, shape, or form through some corporate, you know, maneuvering so that Waste Management still gets the deal at the end of the day. And I would love to see, despite the fact that you have the right to refuse the signability, well, then what happens? Are they going to go out of business? And then you're screwed. Okay? Maybe, you know, there should be, in addition to us, you know, having a say in whether we accept it or not, maybe we need to have some form of payment or protection coming back our way, you know, should this deal be assignable. It just seems really, really fishy that the company that's been doing all the work for us, you know, for all this time is just way, way out there. Something's wrong.
Actually, I actually have a couple of comments on that. I usually hold it in her... There's two things. One thing, we do have a little bit of a pattern here. I wanted, guys, Ron, J.C., please be a little careful on some of this. We had the same issue, if you remember, with the air conditioning units with the bids. If you remember, there was a certain issue with regard to what they interpreted the bids to be. So it's nothing that, you know, you can't foresee everything, just keep it in mind. The second thing is also just to address, Victor, when you talk about different pricing, at least the way I see it, and, you know, you've got one company that's young and hungry, and they're trying to establish essentially the fact that they can, whether they're rebuilding or whatever it is, whether they want to try and come in here and use us to try and get other municipalities by saying, hey, now we have a couple municipalities, we'll take advantage of the fact that we're getting a good price on that. That's all it is. This is where I see it.
All right. So we have a motion, a second. Surprise... Hmm, that's odd. It's surprising it doesn't show poll vote. I would assume that this would require a poll vote. Just before we vote on it, I just want to ask Frank one more question. Just for the record, very, very clear, was there anything wrong with this bid process in your professional opinion? No. Okay.
I'd just like to ask if anybody here on the dais has any disclosures to make about any of these three companies. No. Okay, thank you. Just putting it out there.
Do you have a disclosure?
No, I don't.
Okay.
I'm asking if anyone else does.
I don't know what that means. All right.
You have the right to ask a question. All right. Just move forward.
Okay, so poll vote?
I can do a poll vote.
I'd like to.
No problem. Councilmember Yaffe?
Four.
Councilmember Chikoshi?
Four.
Councilmember Sager?
Four.
Councilmember Reed?
Opposed.
Councilmember Fuller?
Four.
Vice Leader?
Four.
Mayor Leonard?
Four.
Travis, six, five.
Very good.
Number 10.
Discussion requested by Councilmember Reed regarding possible code amendment on noise regulations for emergency backup generators.
It's on you.
I want to go forward at another time and look at changing the code because I had the displeasure of hearing a new project test their emergency generators, you know, 10 feet from an existing residence. And when I tell you that it emptied the building because the neighbors thought that it was like a jet crashing or landing there, I did call the police department to come and make a report. And I'm not sure that the officers always have access to the decibel meter, but... So I don't think it was measured. But I'm not sure what that number would have to be. But I'd like to see them tested and some examples given because if what I heard was passable under our ordinance, it's totally unacceptable, and we'd have to change the level. So, you know, we'd have to get some measurements, maybe do some testing. But, you know, we suffered, an example is, you know, a 10- or 15-year-old building up on 102nd Street, and it wasn't exactly the same kind of a generator. But the sound that emanates is just unforgivable.
I have no problem reevaluating and taking a look at it. The only question I would have is, Marlene, I thought we had talked once before that you can now get a decibel reader off of an app on a phone?
Yeah, you can.
Right, so we don't now want to... Right, exactly. So just for... So when you're saying whether they have it available, it should be available on a regular iPhone or whatever?
Yeah. And at the time, you know, it was being tested several times. So are you saying that then you'll accept a decibel reading, you know, done and captured by a citizen? Or do you want whoever's on duty, an employee, to do it? I mean, I would think so, right?
Yeah.
So, but I would, you know, there was no detail of the decibels and all that. I'm really not sure how, Marlene, you would like to proceed with doing this study? Or, you know, can you ask one of the buildings, or several of the buildings, to fire up the generator?
Fire it up. Yep, sure.
Which property was it?
This one happened to be the... Oh, next to where I live.
Okay.
So, and maybe where it's located, but, you know, you never see the other residents of that building, but every one of them came out that night.
And you're saying that the...
At night, what time did they do that?
Well, they were testing, and it was like 9:00 or 10:00 o'clock at night.
That's not acceptable.
No, it's not acceptable. It says there's...
But I think that Ron gives some exceptions all the time when they're doing like that late thing.
No, this wasn't an exception. The Miami-Dade Fire Department, when testing the emergency systems of the building, has to do it at night. It was early after 6:00. And they ran it for about 10 minutes. The police did respond. The generator was already turned off, but they have to be able to run and see if all the systems are operational. They can only do it at night. At that point in time of the year, it was still dark at 6:00. We still can... Obviously, we can test. That's not an issue. But just so you know, it wasn't... They just didn't decide, hey, let's fire this baby up at 9:00 at night.
They were trying to...
That's strange.
Because some of the lighting, all the lighting and all that stuff needs to be... And it's got to be in darkened condition.
Ron, I would just say this for the future, when we discuss this in the future, my issue would be, I mean, testing is one thing if they require, if the fire department requires it at 6:00 or somewhere. But what I think we have to look at is, at some point, if any of these things are on, in other words, they're going to stay on, if we lose power for 24 hours or whatever else, and one building gets power because they have a generator, and the other people need to find a hotel somewhere else because they can't live in theirs, that's not acceptable.
Well, and I think they go on on a regular basis, too. Like, part of maintaining them is that maybe weekly, they'll fire up for a short period of time.
We can regulate what time of day and stuff like that. No more.
That was not a regular running of the generator for testing. That is a building, a brand-new building, having an inspection by the fire department of that equipment.
Was the noise any different than if it was a regular...
Yes, because they usually run it once a month for 30 minutes, and it's in the morning because I've had people complain about it in the morning also. So this was out of the ordinary because it's a new building, and they were looking at a whole bunch of stuff, including the generator.
Was this generator supposed to be for full power for the building, or was it just emergency exits and stuff?
I don't know that until I look at it.
Is it supposed to run elevators?
Yeah, it's for...
Emergency lighting and everything, you know, not to run each seat.
Okay, but that's a problem because the issue is if we are... If the people lose power, you know, the fact that one building has elevator for a long period of time, and the building next to it can't live in their building, that's not acceptable. We have to... I mean, it's one thing to run it for an emergency evacuation for 20 minutes or anything like that. Can't run it on full-time. That's what we're going to have to address.
All right. But you're saying that the sound was excessive?
It was. I don't think there's anybody here who, you know, would think it wasn't. And it was from inside, not just standing on the street, you know? It's from inside the neighboring units, hence everyone coming out really in distress.
I will coordinate with you to visit your apartment when they run it and measure from inside and outside.
Yeah, that'd be fun. Yeah.
You still let me in? No, still let me in. I've got to have somebody to let me in.
No, you're going to know. When they run it, I mean, I'm not going to go in to the same place, but I'd like to stand next to the building and just hear it as well. Just let me know.
Could you just send us a message, let us all know so we...
Yes, but I'm not going to schedule based on your schedules.
No, no. Just let us know when they're scheduled.
We never get scheduled.
You know better. Okay. All right. So moving on. Number 11. I'm sorry? You want to speak? Did you?
Sir.
Sir, okay.
I have had a generator for many, many years, but I have a generator service. It's called generator service, which the town uses. I use it, checks my generator once a month. And I have to tell you, generators do make noise. And in an emergency situation, when electricity goes off, if you want to spend $20,000, $40,000 for a generator for a whole house, it will make a little more noise than if you spend it for one room or for just your refrigerators, et cetera. The important thing is if you have a generator, which I've had for 20 or 30 years and replaced many times, you should have a service. And that service comes out once a month, and I pay for that. And we'll make sure that it's running properly. But I have to tell you that when your electricity goes off and the generator goes on, generators are not silent. They make noise. But if you pay for a generator, then you should pay for the service. Thank you. But you can't have a noise ordinance because there's different-sized generators that make different noises.
All right. Thank you. All right, number 11.
Discussion requested by Councilmember Yaffe regarding regulations and parking requirements for existing building users. Back in, I guess it was 2004, we adopted an ordinance which provided that ground-level retail on Kane Concourse would be exempt from the parking requirement. It was a means to sort of promote retail visits because with the existing buildings, it was, you know, pretty much impossible to be able to, for any retail operation, to provide sufficient parking that would have been, otherwise would have been required by the code. I thought, and I didn't recall, that that provision didn't apply to restaurants. I think that with the proposal here is that with respect to any existing ground-floor business, whether it's a restaurant or retail, in order to encourage new businesses to open up in Kane Concourse, that they be exempt from the parking requirement. Otherwise, a new restaurant, for example, would have to comply with parking requirements. This doesn't apply to new construction in the town. New buildings, new construction would have to comply, but for existing, the proposal is that they don't have to comply.
Or renovation.
Or renovation. But that they wouldn't have to comply. So in other words, if a new restaurant is opening up, they don't have to have X number of, like, parking spaces per seat or table or booth or whatever. It's just a way to, you know, promote new businesses coming into town.
Can I say something since I'm... This is one of those cases where I think the council meant well by approving that regulation, but I think by not getting rid of the requirements for the restaurants, it kind of tied my hands. I've had several times when people come in, and when I do a restaurant, where we have to struggle with the parking requirement. Many of the buildings that are existing have no parking that's provided, especially on the 1000 block. Very few parking. Actually, the 1100 block has more parking, and we have the parking garage in proximity, but I still can't say, yeah, okay, you can have a restaurant. And it makes no sense. The reason I attach the use regulations to this is because the only exemption is to the retail users. And if you read the use regulations, I mean, if you can tell me the difference between a clothing and wearing apparel store versus a beauty shop or a dog grooming salon or a fitness center, or as far as traffic, there's not much difference. We exempt a grocery store, but we don't exempt a beauty salon. So it's kind of difficult to manage. The existing building were approved with the parking that was required at the time. If we want to encourage people to open more restaurants and people to open more retail, I think you have to kind of accept the fact that there's no way to create the parking. If somebody's adding square footage, that's a different issue. But the existing buildings as they are, if we want new users on the ground floor, we need to... I need to be able to say, you change your use from a restaurant to a doctor's office to a restaurant? Wonderful. Otherwise, we have a problem.
Isn't there an alternative to paying to the parking trust? But it's a lot.
Yeah, it is a lot.
It's a lot for that. Maybe it could be modified to be like, you know, a lot more reasonable.
I think it's really going to... You know what? I mean, first of all, the restaurants at night, you know, there really isn't an issue with parking. During the day, you know, there may be. But, you know, I mean, listen, if you... I don't know what other cities do, but, you know, there are a lot of areas where there's, you know, whether it's midtown or the beach or whatever.
Downtown Hollywood.
Downtown Hollywood, where it's really just no parking. But if you're going to impose this type of restriction, then I don't think, you know, some businesses are going to want to...
And how did it affect the Grand Beach Hotel? Because remember, we had that whole conversation about, you know, we wanted them to have a restaurant, but they didn't want to pay, you know, what would have been like $44,000...
No, it was a lot more. Hundreds of thousands, right? Yeah, it was a lot more. They already paid for 21 spaces into the garage, which they didn't need all of them, but they had a very made-up previous arrangement with the hotel.
the hotel. Had they added the restaurant, it would have been more than a million dollars for parking.
They're going to have a facility, but it's an internal facility. At this point, I don't think they're allowed to serve. So would this change it and would make them allowed to serve?
No, no.
No?
This is for, only for existing buildings.
Right.
That exist now.
Oh, there, okay.
And it doesn't, I mean, it wouldn't affect buildings that are under construction. Under construction, as different requirements.
Well, they, they're applicable in order to do what they did.
Right. And when the monarch added the restaurant, they paid for it into the parking trust. So that's already, that's been done. It's been arranged. You know, lunchtime, there's a lot of shared parking. I mean, I spoke to Michael Miller about this. A lot of cities consider the fact that you go to Dr. Whittles and you're there at eleven forty-five, it's twelve-thirty, you're hungry, you want to have lunch, your car's already parked. It's already counted. So you just walk over to the restaurant on the corner, if there's one on the corner. And you have, and you have.
A lot of people from East Island walk to Kane Concourse.
Yeah, exactly. So it's not, it's bigger than you.
There are bigger walkers than I am.
I mean, if we ever want to get rid of the, if we ever want to get rid of the office users on the, on the ground floor, something like this needs to happen. I mean, I'm sure other things.
So what were you suggesting that we do?
Right now, right now, if a new restaurant wants to open up in Kane Concourse, they have to meet, or ninety-six, they have to meet certain parking requirements. And they can't meet those parking requirements.
I sort of remember us suspending the parking requirements.
We did for re, we did for retail, not for restaurants.
No, restaurants only in the evening. They're open only for evenings. So that...
It's a whole, they're trying to, they're trying to... Right. But if you want to open up for lunch or breakfast, then you would have to meet the parking requirements.
So you're suggesting that we just add restaurants?
Add restaurants.
Just generally exempt restaurants from any parking.
No, and you.
Right, retail.
Any use, any use on the ground floor, in an existing building.
Although, the only thing I would say is, I would want to make sure that if, for the few buildings that have it, they're not allowed to now remove it. In other words, in other words, there are one or two buildings that have, that have parking behind or whatever else. I don't want them being able to remove that parking.
That would be like the 1111 building.
Right, I understand. It's just how we, you know, we work with them to change.
All right, we have public comment. Francis Newhart.
You're really trying to choke this business district, and you're giving the wrong information. Number one, when that was, that was put into effect in 2006, it was to incent it for restaurants and for retail. As of today, over four hundred business tax receipts have been given out. One percent is of that usage. And we already shut down Subway, Bay Harbor Terrace, The Pastry Shop, and Gringos recently. And talking about restaurants, according to this code, Mr. Yaffe, it says, notwithstanding the above existing businesses, districts shall be exempt from the parking requirements, subsection C. four through eight. Four through eight includes hotels, places of assembly, religious institutions. This is gonna wipe us out. If you, all you have to do is go on the business district, and you will see that the church is sixty thousand square feet. Where are they gonna park? You've got...
It has nothing to do with the church.
Not with the church, yes.
Has absolutely nothing.
To do with what?
What we're proposing tonight has absolutely nothing to do with the church. Will have no effect on the church.
No effect, okay.
No effect.
Nobody has any effect. But meanwhile, we have no parking in our business district, which includes one percent of retail and restaurants.
So then you would not, so then you don't want any more restaurants on Kane Concourse? Is that, is that what you're saying?
No, I am trying to put another restaurant on the Kane Concourse. And you know why?
So, and this would make it easier to put another restaurant on the Kane Concourse because they won't have to, they won't have to comply with parking.
Okay, if that's the case, if that's the case, reword the, what you said. Notwithstanding the above, existing buildings in the business district shall be exempt from the parking requirements, only subsection number five, restaurants. You should not be including these other usages.
It doesn't make any sense to exclude certain ones.
Excuse me. Also, this woman has given four hundred business tax receipts. There are Eagle Bank. Eagle Bank was a brand-new building. What usage is on the ground floor that allows that? Where does she give a business tax receipt to that, to that specific building? The preschool. All these usages are not legal. And she put out business tax receipts.
All right, thank you. And I... Yeah, there is, there is a process under the, under the law of the state of Florida to apply for, and under municipal, I guess, and county ordinances, to apply for business tax receipts. It's really not an issue of discretion. You know, I like it, I don't like it. I mean, if you're a lawyer or a doctor, if you're a lawyer or a doctor, you operate a restaurant, you operate a dog groomer, any type of business, that's required to have a business tax receipt, you will apply for. And if you meet whatever the requirements are in the law, you're entitled to it. It's not she, she, she who does it. You know, we're following the law in this town in terms of issuing business tax receipts.
Excuse me. All right, Milton, come on. You waited.
Milton Reisman, 1135 Kane Concourse. I think it's a good proposal. I think it's important to take away barriers from getting retail establishments on Kane Concourse. I recently had an issue with a, the beauty salon at 1111 Kane Concourse. I had, I had a buyer for the space. They wanted to put a restaurant in. Luckily, that space was previous to the restaurant, and it was previously approved for parking, and it wasn't an issue. But we need more cafes, and we need more retail establishments on Kane Concourse. And I think it's important. New buildings, they've got to provide the parking required by code. But existing buildings, it's impossible to add parking when the building's already built. So I think that, you know, Mr. Yaffe is correct. As it relates to existing buildings, it should be a no-brainer. I mean, we're trying to make Kane Concourse as vibrant as possible, and so we have to take away obstacles to, and barriers to entry. And hopefully soon, we're gonna have a situation where we're really gonna have a parking problem, and we're gonna have to figure out where to put parking. But like Marlene was saying, most of the people that frequent our cafes for breakfast or lunch are not avid trips to the island. It's basically people that work on the island, that live on the island, and it's not new cars that are coming to the island and need to find a parking spot. It's mainly people who work here and live here. So I don't think it's gonna add, I don't think the proposal is gonna add more parking demands. Or if it does, it would be very little additional parking demands. Because, I mean, we all frequent these places. We see who's there. It's people from the island. It's people that work here. So I encourage you all to pass this resolution or propose it in the future, but we've gotta, we've gotta make it, we've gotta make it so that the rents on Kane Concourse ground floor are more expensive than the upper floors. Thank you.
Thank you, Milton, for your comments.
I think even a long time ago, when we debated this parking issue, you know, I really could never reconcile the concept of having, burdening retail renter, basically, with any type of obligation to provide parking, because it really doesn't, it didn't make sense. You can't create parking ex nihilo. And you certainly can't impose some type of payment into a parking trust for, you know, for a business that's gonna be renting or leasing or whatever. So I, I mean, I certainly support, you know, the concept of removing legislation that would prohibit businesses from going to the ground floor based on parking. But one thing I would definitely prohibit, because I've seen this take place, and like Mrs. Newhart alluded to, we can't have any more offices on the ground floor. I mean, I think we should, you know, I'm in favor of waiving parking restrictions, but I am also in favor of strictly restricting any office type of business on the ground floor.
I agree.
I mean, we already do that.
It's already restricted by...
I know, but you know, in all, in all, in all honesty, it seems as though like, one, you know, any, you know, a retail space goes out, and then some type of office goes in, whether it's like a brokerage firm.
Because we have this, we have this in the ordinance that depending on the building, there's a, there's a limitation by percentage.
Yes.
That not more than X percent can be, can be office. So when a business may close, unfortunately, they look at the percentage and they say, okay, this particular building is entitled to have.
Is it reevaluated?
Right. So I think we had said that when we, when we adopted that ordinance years ago, that any new construction on Kane Concourse would, would be required to have only retail on the ground floor and no office. But with the existing buildings, there were exceptions made. And I'm not saying that it shouldn't, it can't be or shouldn't be revisited.
I think it's also a certain amount of time, right?
Right.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'm a little bit torn, because I was, you know, I was a great, you know, a proponent of allowing a landlord to lease his space regardless. But I think, I for one have witnessed the demise of Kane Concourse, and I think it's largely because of the space that's dedicated to offices on the ground floor. It's just, it can't get any traction as a retail destination if every other office is a dentist office, or, you know, a real estate office, or even a real estate office. Because, you know, honestly, I know that we said, well, a real estate office might be retail-ish, but it ain't.
No, it's not. Okay, but there's, there's, there's the parking regulations, which is what I was trying to get you to tell us on today. And then there's the use regulations, which is where that section is, where it talks about seventy-five percent if you have more than two bays. If it's two bays, then fifty percent has to be retail. If it's empty, if it's an office use, I mean, vacays for less than six months, you can put an office use again. We could take a look at that. But that would have to be a separate ordinance anyway.
But it goes to the same issue at hand. And so, if, if there's no objection, then why don't we move this for first reading, and at the same time, have Mr. Miller with some suggestions?
Well, I'd like this to be first reading the next meeting.
Right, right.
Ma'am?
Yeah.
I'd like this to be first reading the next meeting. I deal with this every day. We may not be able to bring you a change to the use ordinance for first reading at the next meeting, but we have to discuss it.
Well, let's put it on for discussion, right.
No, what I, what I said was, this would be on, if no objection, for first reading. And then Mr. Miller can come up with some recommendations for changes.
Right.
Completely separate.
Completely separate.
Yeah, I'm on the second page. Okay, so, all right, moving on. Excuse me. We're on to number 12. Item 12. Discussion requested by...
He didn't, he didn't have the paper.
I don't have a paper. Is there a paper?
Nope. There wasn't a paper.
She... Well, come on. Well, then, come on, then, come on. You're gonna speak about number 11? Okay. You're, you're against it too?
No, 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 I'm not. Hi, Francis Newhart MD. There seems to be some confusion about it. I'm in favor of, a hundred percent in favor of retail restaurants, things like that. You know, just the cost of even a small restaurant is really prohibitive for these people, you know. And, you know, you're not gonna get Burger King or any place like that to come here, because we don't have the population. The other thing is, I'm also in favor of limiting offices and things like that.
Limiting or not limiting?
Limiting.
Limiting law.
Eliminating. Keeping the ones that are there, but not adding any additional.
We're not advocating kicking people out that are already there. That's not...
No further offices. If it were up to me, I would get rid of, you know, some of the ones I have. But I, you know, actually, I can't.
Okay. All right, that's basically all I wanted to say.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Good. All right, number 12. Discussion requested by Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor Bruda to establish a provision in the town code to require vacant waterfront properties to secure access on the waterways.
So I've, I've been walking around the town, and I've had a lot of conversation about, not the green space from the empty lots, but the actual when they get to the water. Because some of them, the docks are not gated, and some of them are just completely open. And so there's a lot of kids and residents who obviously want to enjoy it, but there's a safety issue to it. Some of the kids are jumping from the docks into the water. And I think that, you know, either we need to require them to gate their docks, or put a low gate so that they can at least see the view, but still protect so that they don't go jumping off the...
Or fishing.
Or fishing, or other things that they're doing that the residents, maybe that's not the right place for it.
Let me ask you one thing, though. Because when you talk about vacant waterfront properties, you know, if something is obviously torn down before they build or anything along those lines, do we want to have a temporary fence? In other words, it's not gonna, aesthetically, it doesn't look right, because by saying to somebody that you have to put up some kind of barrier to the, to the water, they're not gonna spend the money for a high-end looking fence if they're gonna tear it down two months later or three months later when they get a permanent.
Yeah, but a lot of these...
They're gonna put a bar in there.
Right.
I understand that.
No, I, we have to, right, but we have to deal with that. But we have vacant land that's been there for more than a year, more than two years.
We could require what type of fence that they would...
But we need to do, we need to do, we need to do something, because these kids are, I mean, they're just, you know, if there's a safety hazard here, there's a safety issue.
But also, remember, we also require them, if, if they're not going to start construction when, I think, within thirty days, we force them to sod it. So...
I know, that makes it more attractive.
Right, which makes it more attractive. So if you're making the fence...
Well, I'm only, we're talking, yeah, but, you know, let me ask you this. Would you prefer, you know, if a child or somebody is out there and they jump?
Of course not, but my question...
But then, you know, if they're gonna be there for more than a couple months, and it's gonna be a year or two years, I'm talking about the, you know, they can put a low fence.
Vice Mayor Bruda.
I've seen kids jumping from our bridges.
I understand that, but...
If they're jumping from the seawall, it's like almost no G P L, a little bit better. It's not even not jumping off our bridges.
Vice Mayor Bruda, can we give us some time to research this issue? Because I know we can definitely regulate what type of fence you gotta, you're gonna put up, if you want to put up the fence. You're talking about making them put one up. Now, these people that are there, I know there's children and everything, are trespassing on private property. So I don't know...
Well, no, we have the ability to extract the nuisance. We can actually put the thing on, just like we require around the swimming pool and so forth. But, right. But at the same time, I mean, we have to find, I have no problem discussing it, but the problem becomes, what do we require there? Because there's no way we're gonna be able to allow them to require a very high-end fence, like I said, and then have them remove it. The timeline becomes an issue. And also, I'm actually surprised for a lot of these homes that their private insurance doesn't require it because of the attractive nuisance issue. I mean, these people, when they have the pieces of property, you know, they're liable. Somebody, a kid comes in and jumps, or it's hurt, so you would think they're...
You're not talking about the West Island, primarily. You're talking about the East Island.
No, I'm talking, I'm talking about the East Island.
Yeah, the waterfront lots on the West Island that don't have any fencing either.
I'm the same kind of book. Like when I was on, lived on the East Island, I made sure our building put in a fence, because people all the time would come onto our property, and guess what? They're, they're watching the sun go down. And as beautiful as it is, you know, they fall into the water, guess what? I'm getting sued.
Well, no matter what you do, you have to require the sod, because that keeps the dust down. You can't let it be a dust bowl. And then you just have to decide. I think it's necessary. I agree with it. And, you know, the lot next to me, every time I see Matt Amster in here, I report it to him. For a while, I was reporting to the manager pictures. Every time I saw there were kids playing on the dock. And I guess the property owners just put two fences up that said no trespassing, and that was good enough for them for their liability. But, you know, I see it all the time. And I would propose that we require them to do something like a shadow box fence. That used to be somewhere around Ninety-seventh and West Bay Harbor Drive on the water for a long time, and it really doesn't look bad. And they would do that along the front, because it would serve two purposes. You know, it would keep the trespassers out, because once they come into a vacant lot, now they kind of have easy access to the two properties next door. And then there might be a time where if there's no barrier in the middle, they might have to do something on the sides as well. But I support that. I think it's a very good idea.
I don't have a problem looking at it, but I'm just saying, I think practically, we're gonna have to see, when you bring it back, I think we're gonna have to look at how, really, if we're trying to prevent kids or anybody from getting there. The fact of matter is, even if you have that one property owner put the fence there, they're not putting it into the concrete, they're putting it into the grass. It's very easy for someone to go into a different property, walk right around it. So we just have to find a solution.
If they're gonna put it up, they might as well do it right at the street, and then that'll knock out two problems.
Yeah, and I think we have a couple of really good examples on the island where that's happening. And so maybe when it comes back for the first reading, we can show some examples where it's been really successful.
We didn't, we didn't, I think we purposely didn't want these fences like forever on the street, because, you know, there, you've had vacant lots that have been vacant for years, and we, that's why we may even take down the fences and sod. So if you're gonna do something, it's gotta be near the water, or otherwise, you're just gonna streets line these.
And I wasn't talking about that fence. I wasn't even talking about, I said, the concrete. I'm not talking about near the road. I'm talking about near the dock. Because the problem is, it's very easy for somebody, if there's, if you put up a fence, you require a fence to go right before the dock itself, they're not gonna drill into the concrete. If you put it up in front, they're gonna go to the property next door, sneak in. If they're sneaking in one, they're gonna sneak in first, and just walk around it.
Well, then maybe like, maybe like a nice white aluminum, like the picket thing, that you can see the grass through, that the wind passes through, that you have your breeze and your...
But you're saying probably someone going right around it. I mean, this is not, I mean...
And then they have to do the sod.
But I understand what you're saying. I understand what they're gonna do to the property. I'm saying, we can, I have no problem addressing, I'm saying, let's come back with...
Two things that are in the code. First, first, just something for you to consider. The types of fences that we allow around the property are chain link, wood, chaining coated, green or black, wood, you know, any other type of fencing. Now, just for you to think, we would, I think we would have to, and I have to talk to the tenants, we would have to consider that is a health and safety issue to force somebody to put the fence up. For pools, properties on the water, it's not required to have a fence on your seawall. Now, it's a little different. It's, it's required to have it around the sides.
Right.
Right.
But even if you don't have a pool, you don't have to block off the seawall.
No, I understand. But then people, so people could, they'll have access to your backyard, that's the point. But it's not necessarily required on the water. So I'm saying, we would have to find that there is a, but there's no reason to require them to put something by the seawall that is not already, like, they could put a chain link.
I'll tell you what, what's a health issue is that people will walk their dogs, garbage collects there. So now you have, you know, a dog depository, dog waste depository, and, you know, it's not, it's not a park that's supervised or cleaned by the town. That's where I say you have your health hazard. That I see all the time.
And there's another issue that the cops bring up to me, Kelly, and as a cop, you probably can relate. They don't even like the green screening, because they can't see inside the property. So if we put a wood, a wood fence up and we block the...
Yeah, I hear you.
Ninety-seven forty, for example, had a sailboat back there that was exceeding the, everything. And we couldn't see it from the stream. We could, we could see it down the canal, but we couldn't tell exactly how it was. So we had to actually get permission to go in there to make sure that, to cite them.
Right.
So, because it exceeded, it wasn't tied properly, it exceeded the length. So...
The more, the more we talk about it, the more I think, like, a white aluminum, you know, whatever they call those, not a picket exactly, you know...
It starts to get expensive, though, but let me just say this. You said one other thing here.
You can have a service.
No, but here's the other issue, and I, one thing we're gonna have to look into. If we're talking, if we declare it a safety issue, then there is every reasonable argument from someone to say, well, you know what? If it's, if access to the water without having a fence is considered a safety issue, then every homeowner, every building that does not have a fence, that there's, even if they don't have a pool, that every single building and home on both islands would have to build a fence if they're on the water. and home on both islands would have to build a fence if they're on the water."
At least they're occupied, and there's somebody there that would call.
If we're declaring it as a safety hazard.
Right, you know what I'm saying? You're talking about an unoccupied place where there's no one, there's no one to call if it's happening. And then another thing I thought of, too, instead of a regular trespassing sign, I think if you have the kind of sign that say, "I authorize the Bay Harbor police to enforce trespassing in my absence," like they have, you know, and seven-eleven's a different place, then the owners are saying, "No, I mean, we have it on Ninety-Fifth Street." That's what it's, any trespassing, you know, to control that. So, then instead of it just trespassing, because there's no one to report it, then at least if the police see someone there.
I understand, I understand. Let's be careful.
We have one public comment, Fran Newhart, and then that one doesn't.
I put on the East Island, you're required to have a fence, which, I'm misinterpreting this, but anyway, where the farmer's market was the other, that other week, they didn't have a fence in the back. And they did sell that property, and I wanted to know why code compliance wasn't involved when they sold the property, because that, that whole, you're supposed to have everything in code compliance before you can sell a property. So, that includes the back where the dock is. But more importantly, getting back to you, Mrs. Bruder, okay, we have laws and regulations about having access to the water. This is a state required. You see it in Bay Harbor to get to the ocean and this and that. The question I have for you is, by establishing these, not being able to have access, because you're now putting fences and stuff, does this mean that citizens can't go? In other words, where's our access to the water now?
Between each.
It's not relative to the.
Well, it is, because this is securing the access, so people can't, can't get up.
But you mean the shoreline review, like the couple of projects that have the access, the public access?
Well, they don't have it anymore.
It has nothing to do with this.
Well, the point is, is the gate, in other words, where our gateway is, is that where the public access is going to be to the waterway, and do they need a fence, or are they going to fall in the water?
Well, this discussion was only, as Vice Mayor Bruder brought up, was vacant properties, not properties that are developed, trying to.
Okay, but it will be a vacant lot, these access to the waters, the gateway, the public access to the water. Are we going to put a gate on the water?
We're, you're talking about two separate things. We're talking about vacant land that is sitting there idly without, that's very different than having access.
But you're talking about danger, and that could be very dangerous, because some of those kids dish on those gateways.
All right, we're back. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
A second. All right, we are adjourned at ten thirty-four P. M. Good night.